Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And gentlemen, start your engines. Good evening. Good evening, good evening. Just waiting for my members to log in. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the October 12th, 2021 Board of Selectmen meeting. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Tropiano?
Yes, all five selectmen present, as well as town administrator Derek Sullivan and Richard Bowen, town council.
Thank you. And the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Slaven, your turn.
A couple of weeks ago, we'll do it again.
The states of America and to the republic. Thank you. Announcements, we will go first to Mr. Munees. Do you have any announcements this evening?
Jim's still muted.
Mr. Slaven, do you have any announcements, sir?
Just a couple. Okay. We have community associates, which is a group that's been around since the 1920s. Is looking for new members, which are business people. Doesn't matter if you're male or female, we take both, changing that setup from a while ago. Veterans Council had a meeting and they will be having a Veterans Day parade in November. There'll be more information coming next week. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Munees, are you there? Oh, you disappeared. Okay. Mr. Titlebaum, do you have any announcements?
I do not. Thank you.
Mr. Tropiano, do you have any announcements?
Nope.
Okay, I have a couple. There will not be an executive session at the end of this meeting. And I want to correct something that I said last week. I indicated that the yellow building next to Bear Life had been sold, and that is not true. So I just wanted to correct that information. And for those of you who don't. Well, a lot of people are aware that the Board of Health is currently looking at its motel regulations that were put in place in 2017. The issue of homelessness, the issue of appropriate housing has come up before the board, and I would suggest that if you have ideas that would help the board come to possibly an improvement on their regulations, that you tune into their meeting. And that's it. Don't see Mr. Munees, so I will have to skip over him. Before I go any further, I just want to say that some of the individuals that I will allow into the meeting this evening are either litigants or potential litigants to the town of Wareham. The reason I am letting them speak is that they have either been the primary signatory on a petition, and therefore they are welcome and necessary to the regularly scheduled agenda item. In other words, we need to hear them present the petition, and that is why certain individuals who have not been allowed to speak will be allowed to speak. And let's see.
Sorry to interrupt. I just got a I know people are saying that on channel 29, which is Verizon, the picture's not good, and neither is the sound. Recommend to use channel 30 instead. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Let's go to. Is there anyone who chooses to address the board? And citizens comments. Ms. McHale, if it has something to do with the recommendation, which is on the agenda, then I would ask that you put your hand down if you have something else that you would choose to speak to us on that. That is fine. Ms. Sandigate, you will be speaking to the article that you have petitioned. And so I hope I've answered your questions, the two of you. Ms. McHale, does that, did you want to speak on something other than the item on the agenda? Okay. Then I guess the answer is no. Seeing nobody on citizens petition, citizens participation. I will now go to appointments, reappointments and interviews. Mr. Tropiano, can you present what's on the agenda, please?
We have, we have board comments.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Slaven. Go ahead. Boards comments.
Oh, okay.
Would the record please show that Mr. Munees apparently is having trouble? Ah, there he is. Nope. Yeah, there he is. Okay. You're back, Mr. Munees. If in fairness to you, do you have any announcements, sir? Before we go into board comments? You're muted, Mr. Munees.
No, go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you. We are now on boards comments. And Mr. Slaven, go ahead.
First comment was last week, there was request on GATRA about the Shangri-La route. We got basically an answer back almost immediately in the following morning. I got a call and they are reinstating the Shangri-La route. So the GATRA line that's been running for Shangri-La will continue to run. It will not be terminated. And Community Events Committee is still has the ability to take on, you know, helping assistance financially with anybody's nonprofit, with any events between now and the end of the year. Because so many events were canceled because of COVID. We're just making the opportunity available if anybody has anything they want. And they basically will contact the Community Events Committee. Thank you. That's it.
Thanks. Mr. Munees, do you have any board comments, sir?
Yeah, I just, just an FYI, I still couldn't find the document that was sent to you related to the GATRA bus route. So if you could resend that, I'd appreciate that. Was sent in and you read it into the minutes, I believe. Last week.
Are you talking to Mr. Slaven, sir?
No, you, Chairman White side.
Oh, I will send, I'll have the letter that we sent to GATRA sent to you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I guess you read something that someone.
Oh, okay, yes. Yeah, excuse me. That was from Ms. Jamie Reben Buckminster, and there was a report that I.
No, good. Just if you would follow it.
I would, yes. Thank you for reminding me, sir.
Besides that, you know. I'm good.
Thank you. Mr. Titlebaum, we are in board comments.
Just one. On Friday, I had the pleasure and the honor to speak on behalf of the board at the dedication of the Buzzes Bay Coalition's McFadden Discovery Center in Onset. Obviously, the facility's been operating for a little bit longer. It really started doing things down there last summer. But I, I think it's instructive on how we can get things done in this town when it comes to big projects, and that's by partnering with people who are organized, people who have a good financial base, people who have good ideas, people who can explain things, and people who can generate interest in the public to rally town support behind their projects. And so I think it's a good example of what can be done when we all try to work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tropiano, do you have any? You're done. That was it, right, Mr. Titlebaum?
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Tropiano, do you have any comments? Thank you. I just want to, I have one comment that I'd like to actually read into the record. It falls on something that we talked about last week, which was the use of free cash and the use of monies that we have available in pockets, if we can call it that. This is from S and P Global Ratings and on our bond rating. And I just wanted, this is a very important couple of paragraphs. We are, as you know, rated
Double A?
A double A plus stable. And they, they have rated the general obligation school bond as double A plus stable, and that has been reaffirmed. One of the things that S and P 500 looks at is the overall scenario. So this is what was printed. Stable outlook, the upside scenario. We could raise the rating if the town improves and maintains reserves at higher levels while improving the funding ratio for its large pension and OPEB liabilities and/or economic metrics were to improve to levels of higher rated peers. The downside scenario. Although unlikely in the near term, we could lower the rating if the town draws on its fund balances without replenishing funds used. And if rising fixed costs associated with debt, pension and OPEB costs lead to sustained budgetary imbalance. I think it's very important following up on what Mr. Sullivan said last week, that we all understand why our bond rating is so good. It's because the management in terms of the monetary management has been spectacular. Okay, we will now move on to appointments and reappointments. The applicant is a Wendy O'Brien and Mr. White. I forgot to let you know that she would be allowed in. Miss O'Brien, I would tell you that you will be speaking to the application only when you are in. Thank you. Thank you. So what we are looking at is a solar bylaw study committee. Nonpartisan citizen member. Ms. O'Brien, do you choose to address the board only on this issue as to why you think, why you would like to be a member as the nonpartisan citizen member of the Solar Bylaw Study Committee, please? You're muted. You're muted.
Hi, Derek. Can you hear me? Great.
Thank you.
Yes, I would like to address the board. Just to give you a little background on myself, obviously, I'm Wareham resident. I've lived in Wareham for eight years, and I love the town. I am, I live in the Tohannet Pond South Residence, which is off of Farm to Market Road right behind, and I live right on the pond. I'm married and I have two adult children. And I also, for most of my career, have spent working in financial services. I do strategic planning for the technology division within that institution. In addition, I've always you know, committed to the environment, concerned about climate change. And, you know, feel that, you know, my interest in there hopefully will help the town to resolve some of the issues that it's been facing of late with this, with the solar development. You know, I've been impacted both positively and negatively in regards to solar. I have solar panels on my house and it's reduced the cost of my electricity by two thirds, which is wonderful. And I also have a solar field across from Tohannet Pond, which was a brown field. And I was supportive of that solar going in. But I know that there are other developments that the town is not, you know, residents are not too happy about. I have attended as many solar meetings as I could with the planning board. And truthfully, my heart goes out to the residents. I listened, I won't, you know, mention the development. It's one that the planning board is reviewing right now. And I listened to a gentleman who had lived in this town for 30 years who had, you know, a forest behind his house. And all he wants is to retire and continue to enjoy that forest, you know, as he's on his back deck. And he potentially you know, will be looking at a solar farm. So my heart goes out to him and to everyone that's impacted with the development. So to the extent that I can help the town to resolve some of these issues and to put a bylaw in place that will, you know, support what the town wants going forward. I also do want to mention that my heart also goes out to the planning board. They have taken.
I asked you to, excuse me, I asked you to speak on your application, and I think that, I think that I would ask you to stop. Thank you very much. Mr. Slaven, do you have any questions? The questions are going to go through the chair, which is me, and the answers are going to go through the chair, which is me. Thank you.
First question I have, Judy, is to ask Mr. Bowen. Ms. O'Brien has a lawsuit with Matthew Buckingham against the town of Wareham and each individual member of the Conservation Commission. And of course, one of the members is Sandra Slaven, my wife. So I have to ask Rich first, is there a conflict if I speak either for or against this?
If he chooses to answer the question.
Thank you.
Mr. Bowen, do you choose to answer the question?
Madam Chairman, I think that's an important question. The, the fact that one spouse could be a party to a piece of litigation does implicate a financial interest under the conflict of interest law. And so what I'd recommend is that Selectman Slaven not participate in this particular, on this particular vote, given the fact that he's represented that Ms. O'Brien is a party litigant against his spouse.
Thank you. Mr. Slaven, in that instance, I will ask you to go mute and to shut the video off, and I will text you when we are through with this discussion, sir. Thank you. Let's see. Mr. Titlebaum? Do you have any questions? You're muted, Mr. Titlebaum. You, you are muted.
No. And, you know, I want, you know, just to note for the record that Nancy McHale, the chairperson of the Solar Bylaw Study Committee, did reach out and did say some nice things about Ms. O'Brien and did ask for me to vote for her. She said that she thinks that Ms. O'Brien can keep an open mind going forward. For me, though, the problem isn't going forward. It's the, the fact that she is an appellant to a decision rendered by one of the town boards. And my concern is, is this. I think we all know that there's a lot of, not only emotion involved in this, there's also a lot of money involved in this. And should the Solar Bylaw Study Committee come up with a a bylaw and get it through town meeting that the industry finds very restrictive, they most certainly will try to challenge it. That much I think is a given. And my concern is that it's hard, you know, we do try to protect the decisions of our boards. And we try to protect the decisions of our town meeting as well. It's difficult for me to see a situation in which any prospective some, you know, challenger to the, to a restrictive bylaw wouldn't raise the fact that Ms. O'Brien was previously an appellant and therefore the whole process was biased, yada, yada, yada. So it's not that I don't think she could handle this fairly. I don't know her, so I can't do that. But I am concerned that the past would be brought up in the future, should a fairly restrictive bylaw go forward. So that's my concern with appointing her.
Thank you very much. Mr. Munees, do you have questions or comments, sir?
Yeah, I know, I know. We previously appointed individuals to boards who who had suits against the town. And my question through you, Madam Chair, is if her personal situation will affect her interaction on the board in relation to developing a bylaw that's fair to homeowners and landowners.
Is, that's your question to her, sir?
That's your question through you to her.
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien, you may answer just that question, sir, please.
So yes, I do think that I can be fair. As far as the, the the solar plants that are in litigation, they are grandfathered in, so I cannot affect, as far as I know, those, those projects. You know, we have 19 projects in town. I think the town has been open to the, to solar, and I have every intention of being fair and honest. But at the end of the day, the select body has the, the authority to put forward the bylaw for vote, right? So I can only voice my opinion. I mean, I don't think that you could find a resident in Wareham that hasn't been impacted by solar. And it is my legal right to appeal to the town to relook at the solar projects that are impacting me directly.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Mr. Munees?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tropiano, do you have any questions, sir?
Not going to say anything except for the fact that this is a nonpartisan citizen member. That's all I can say.
Thank you. Okay. I would also point out that this individual will last slot, if you will, on the Solar Bylaw Study Committee is supposed to be a nonpartisan citizen member. So I will call for a vote. Excuse me, I'll call for a recommendation, a motion.
I vote a motion that we do not put Ms. O'Brien on the committee.
There's a motion made to not appoint. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second. And I, you know, I do want Ms. O'Brien to know that it's not personal. It is because I'm concerned about what the outcome would be down the road.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion from the board members on the motion and the second, Mr. Munees?
What would you like to know?
Do you have any further discussion on the? Thank you. Mr. Slav, Mr. Slaven can't vote. Okay. Then I will call for the vote. It's a roll call vote, and I will start with you, Mr. Munees. The motion is to not appoint.
No.
Okay. Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So the appointment fails three, one, zero. Thank you, Ms. O'Brien, for your interest.
Thank you.
I'm going to hang on one second while we get Mr. Tropiano, could you do the one ratifying hearing? Mr. Buckley is not being ratified, as I sent earlier to you. So could you do that while I get Mr. Slaven back?
Yeah, go ahead and I'll discussion. I don't, actually, you know, I don't have it on here at all.
Oh, okay. It's to ratify the hiring of Catherine Farrington as a part-time department assistant for the Board of Selectmen. I know that Mr. Munees actually sat in on this interview or the interviews for this. Ms. Munees, do you care to address the board about your feelings on this?
Application. Out of the four candidates, she was the strongest. And four good candidates, and we ranked them. You know, we asked, asked them all the same questions, and our Director of Human Resources, Doreen Allen England, asked the questions with some follow-ups after, and we individually ranked them, and the scores came out similar, and based on the interaction and the ranking, we chose Ms. Farrington.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to ratify the here, the hire, please?
Oh, moved.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion to appoint or to ratify the appointment of Catherine Farrington, part-time department assistant for the Board of Selectmen? Okay, I will call for the roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Munees?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Five zero zero to the ratification of that one. Thank you very much. Go back to the discussion and possible vote for the re-presenting plan for the town of Wareham, which was forwarded to you by the clerk. The action necessary is for us to approve it. And you've got a copy of the letter that we would be sending to this Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Mr. Titlebaum, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just, I just think so the public knows what's going on here. After every federal census, the state takes a look at where people live. They look at the precincts. State law requires that the precincts have no more than, I think, 4,500 people in them. But it also requires that the precincts be balanced as closely as they can in terms of population. So of course, over 10 years, people move, you know, this precinct gains people, that one loses them, whatever. So the state actually comes up with a redrawing here. What you're seeing here is actually what the state sent down to the town clerk. And it's simply up to us to ratify this. The good thing is, is that there won't be a need to add precinct number seven until after the next federal census. So some, presumably some future clerk down the road will have that fun. But we can stay with six precincts. We just got to redraw the lines a little bit. So that's what's going on here.
Thank you.
And notifications will go out to those whose precincts have changed so that they know where to go for elections.
Those notifications will come from the town clerk's office. Is that so, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the, well, let me get a motion first to
Oh, move to approve.
To approve. And a second, please. Motion made and seconded to approve the recommendation submitted by town clerk created by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Is there any further discussion on the motion, Mr. Munees? You're all set?
No, it's set to us by the Secretary of State, the redistricting. We're just approving it.
That's correct. Okay, Mr. Slaven, comment?
Yeah, I physically went to the clerk's office because the map itself, it's just so much actual sizing. You really couldn't download it, you know, into your home computer or to your iPad or your phone. So I went down and took a close look at it, went over it. The biggest change really is in West Wareham. That's where the, the change was as far as the area and stuff. Everything really is simple and fine. I see no reason why you just go up, can't go ahead and approve it since it's not going to really cause any issues at all.
Thank you. Mr. Tropiano, any questions or comments, sir?
Nope.
Mr. Titlebaum, any further information? And I have none. We have a recommendation to approve, and it was seconded. I will call for a roll call vote, please. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Munees?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano? And myself, yes. So we will be signing that letter. It'll be in the office tomorrow, gentlemen. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is discussion and possible vote on the Bessie Park Rain Garden. Would you let Mr. Buckminster into the meeting, please? Mr. Buckminster is here with the full knowledge and consent of his boss, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Buckminster had had a conversation with me and Mr. Sullivan with some concerns about the design, et cetera, and I will let him address them to you as soon as he appears. And I think he has a screen sharing ability because he does have some he does have some information. I hope that he can screen share with us.
Hi, good evening. Sorry, they just put me on and I locked me in.
locked me out, so I apologize. I missed your intro.
Oh, goodness.
First of all, I just wanna thank you for the approval of our employee that we recently hired as the new natural resource officer. We, we have Morgan Matoli, I hope I didn't butcher her name too hard, coming in next week to start. So, thank you very much. She's excellent. She's just like Eva, fantastic employee. We're really glad to have her on board.
Great.
Now to the real stuff. I, I'm not a super fan, unfortunately, of the, the rain garden, just to be open and honest about it.
Can you be more specific about where the rain garden is, sir? Because if people weren't in in the beginning, they won't know where, where are you talking about?
And I wish I was involved a little sooner before it got to this point, but so there's a rain guard proposed for the Bessie Park area, and it would be the grass section on the south side of the park when you pull into the park. It's also along the roadway and also in the parking zone that currently exists, that runs along the sidewalk. Some of the, some of the factors that I'm looking at is the fact that back in 2010, we broke ground to rebuild Bessie Park's bulkhead. That bulkhead, if, if you've got the blueprints or the plans that I had sent to you, the as-built helical installs, you've got seventy, I believe seventy-eight piles that are installed almost forty feet, and if not more, if they don't get the proper resistance going into that park. Their horizontal pilings with probably a fifteen to twenty-degree pitch. And if you look at the bulkhead, they're probably down about three feet to four feet. And then they go in horizontally into the park. My concern is the fact that one of the rain gardens, we have twelve of these helical piles that are wound into the, into the core of Bessie Park essentially, that are holding these back, and these are all set through torque, which is done through hydraulic, thank you, hydraulic screw-ins. So, you can see the vertical lines, and there's numerous going across the waterfront, and you see the docks on the plan. That, that is your helical pile proposed install. So, some of them may be bigger, because they have to put termination pieces on them. And so, they, if they're not hitting the certain pressure gauge on the installs, they'd obviously have to be deeper. My concern is, is the disruption of the earth that's above them within that zone on the right-hand side. So, they're, my biggest concern is there are twelve there that could be affected. And the auger head, which actually has the plates on it, is considered the load zone of, of where the soil is holding that, that hydraulic, or that, that torque, or the hydraulic pressure that's set for those pile windens. So, there's twelve that are concerning. There, there, there are a bunch of them that are under the parking lot that would obviously need to be, to be you know, there, I don't think they'll be affected as much, because it's working in the no-load zone, which doesn't have the auger plates on your left-hand side. I think there's a picture of an auger being installed on this map. Anyway, so, my concern is that, you know, with digging down probably what, three feet to set a rain garden, you know, you're, you're taking off this layer of, of soil. You're coming in with other items, which are gonna put more water into this area, which is all for filtration, that's gonna go all into these auger heads. And, you know, I, I the engineer of this project did he, he did agree that there are some concerns of the auger head losing that torque power that's holding this wall back. So, I think it's probably something worth looking at. If there's water infiltration, or if they go into, they're going deep, and they're getting into, to affecting these, the heads of these augers, that we're gonna be losing that holding power, which is actually essentially holding the bulkhead together. For those of you that were here installing it, they had a tough time installing the sheathing, because of the, the previous walls that were there and the, the historical use of the area. So, a lot of the sheathing, I think, is being held primarily by your, by this, this bulkhead, by the, the whaling that goes across the front, and not so much the driving power of the sheathing. So, I just, I, I just think it's a concern. I, like I said, I'm not a fan of the project. I think, I think there's, there's a lot better places for this to go. And, you know, I bring up a mind, I could think Tremontale would be a place, because you're dealing with runoff, you're dealing with a highway, you're dealing with a couple of different roads, but that's here nor there. But I, I think once we get to a point where we're taking away a park, you know, we're taking away a property of our only waterfront park here to put this rain garden in, which essentially, from what I was told today, I, I went over to the town of Marion to go look at their rain gardens over at the Island Wharf, and I pull in, and everything's been ripped out of the rain gardens, because the overgrowth has gotten so bad. I met with the highway superintendent of the town of Marion and their employees, and they pulled every piece of vegetation out of the rain gardens today with the town employees, because they have to clean it out. He said they, they had to lay woodchips into it as well, and then in the last rain, the rain garden flooded out, and all the woodchips floated into the parking lot and filled the storm drain, so they had to clean the storm drains on top of it. So, he's coming in with a lot less vegetation, because they've been held to having to actually install this. So, they're gonna, they're gonna cut down the vegetation a little bit and come in with a little same vegetation, keep, keep the rain gardens going, but he did stress without talking about it, that Bessie Park was probably not a great location for this, and that came right from the superintendent of the Marion Highway Department, because I guess he follows the project or something. Other than that, I, you know, I, I don't wanna voice my concerns anymore over, but I do feel that the, the helix, the piles that are holding this together is, is something that's a concern, and it's something to look at. I think we should be building a park. You know, the rain gardens should be built around the park and not the opposite direction. Maybe come up with a plan to work on Bessie Park, and, you know, look at what it can do for us, and then if rain gardens can be factored into this, I think it's a good thing, but it's almost like a cart for the horse with this rain garden. I'm sorry to, I, I know, I know it's supported by you guys. I just really did wanna address the concerns of it.
Could I ask a couple of questions, just to get some more information? First of all, who was it who, and let me get my questions out before you answer them. First of all, who is it that had presented the rain garden project to us, and who would be paying for installation? Who would be taking care of the rain garden? And if we could have the schematic backup, the screen share, can you show us further which, how much of the park you're actually talking about?
Okay, so, as you're looking at your screen, we're gonna be going to your right-hand side. Yep, right there. So, when I did the walkout, the forty-foot mark puts us into the auger heads will, it will put the auger heads into that rain garden, that one in particular. And there's three total. There would be one at the top of the horseshoe parking lot, and one in the parking lot, the last one in the parking lot. Right there would be the, the long one. You'd actually, they're pushing the parking out further, so they would have to cut back out of the, the portion that has the time capsule and everything. Yep, and then they're gonna put another rain garden in there.
So, the rain garden, again, goes in what I would call the circular area?
Well, there's three of them. There's, there's one there, there's one in the parking lot, and then to the right of the screen, you have three, three ponds. The other thing, the highway superintendent said is he had a, a serious mosquito issue down at the park. So, they were spraying and whatever the case may be. They, they ended up canceling like concerts, I guess, for it or something.
And who was it who presented this and got a grant?
Highway Superintendent, the town of Marion.
No, no, our rain garden, the one that we're looking at.
I, I was at a is it national estuaries, or I have to look up the story. I wasn't involved in any of it. I just, I just wanted to voice my concerns of it.
Okay, thank you. How about Mr. Slavin? Do you have any questions to Mr. Buckminster?
Not so much questions. Obviously, when it came up through there from the you know, Dr. Costas and stuff, it was a grant, and it had to do really with as much of a stormwater drain issues that we would have in that area anyways, but since Gary brought up this issue, I remember when the bulkhead, which people have to remember, is not steel or stone, it's plastic. You know, it's a sheathing, and and I don't think people realize the way it was installed. And nothing was brought up but the Conservation Commission about the augers or anything else at the time, but this is a, an issue. If, if that sheathing starts to loosen and come away a little bit, that whole area would collapse, because that's all that's holding everything together. So, what I'd like to see is not vote on this today, but see if we get the engineer who originally did the wall, you know, for Gary, and whoever from the estuaries group designed this to sit down and talk to us to find out if there's issues, if they have concerns. Because at the end of the day, if you go ahead and do this, in two or three years down the road, all of a sudden, that, that whole wall goes away along the dock and everything, we've got serious issues.
And I did hear that the, I was talking to somebody about it, they are
Excuse me.
Oops, sorry.
Hang on one second, Mr. Buckminster, go ahead.
No, no, I did, I did hear that with the rain garden maintenance on it, they are, they're making people out of proposing them, that they do have to put a maintenance bond in place as well, so that might, might just be another option to look at. So, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut into
That's okay. Mr. Mr. Slavin, does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, I mean, this bond doesn't do as much, but let's go.
Thank you. Mr. Minis, do you have questions or comments, sir?
Yeah, this was done by the Horstley Witten Engineering Farm, the engineering on it. And I hope they would have taken into consideration the helical cores. There's a plastic sheathing, and with a concrete bulkhead, with concrete banking going in behind the sheathing, and including the helical cores. I don't believe the, I think we're, we're all making assumptions about things, and we don't have the plans in front of us, because they were presented and we voted on them. Was that a year in the last spring?
Yep.
And so, I, I think it'd be our responsibility to just ensure, as we move forward on this, that the engineers look at the concerns that Mr. Buckminster has brought up, and to either say that there is a, an issue or is not. And again, I don't know if the rain garden goes as far into the helical core area, the helical anchor area, because I'm not looking at the design right now. That was nine months ago. As Mr. Slavin said, this is meant to take care of that direct neighborhood area from the hospital down Cedar Street, down High Street, up to where Main Street cuts in. And we have a certain responsibility to try to ensure we're not dumping raw street water into the harbors. And this was a proposal to help remediate that. So, my, my opinion is that we just make sure as we move forward that we tell the engineers and inquire with them that this is a situation, and ask them if they took it into consideration. It would be a different engineer right now, too. The plans are drawn, but I don't know, Horstley Whitney, Whitney is working on the project through the estuaries program. And we pay for it via grants. I believe that was the plan behind it. And you know, I, I don't have as much issue with the sightliness of a rain garden. I think it adds a little something to a rather bland landscape there in the park. So, that's my opinion, and we just need to take it into consideration as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minis. Mr. Titlebaum, do you have any questions or comments, sir?
I don't, yeah, I mean, I'm not an engineer, and I, and I don't, you know, I wouldn't want to opine on this myself. I think we need to be advised by the people who know what they're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
We've heard from Gary, and I'm not saying he's not somebody who knows what he's talking about, so I don't want him to take offense at that last remark, but but let's hear what the, the company has to say and go from there.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Troppiano?
Well, I'm, I, I think Gary's concerns should be vetted. And the way to do that is to get the engineers in here and present the project, and also tell us a little bit more about how their, how the anchoring is gonna be done, how deep it is, what if, be any issue, you know, and so on and so forth, because I do get the idea, what they wanna do is obviously moving it, you know, to another location isn't gonna help, because that's not gonna help the area, which is really what it's meant to do. It's meant to allow the water pretreatment before it gets into the, into the harbor. So, I, I think we need to hear from them. Now, I noticed that GAF, I noticed on the bottom of this thing, I saw GAF did some kind of an as-built on it, and he's local. Where's the other drawing? There's another drawing, right?
Yeah, he just replaced it.
I saw GAF's name at the bottom of it, did I not, Derek?
Patrick, Gary, that you are correct. That was on the, the first one, which is the one that highlights the auger system that holds the wall.
Right, GAS was on there, so there's certainly a local agent and could come in, but I'd also like to know who the design people were at the estuaries program.
Horstley Witten.
Yeah.
It was Michelle West from the Horstley Witten Group.
Well, then we should request that they come in as well. You know, look, you know, when somebody, when somebody like Gary comes up and, and makes a suggestion that there may be an issue, I think we need to vet that out. We gotta find out if there's gonna be an issue. Not, I mean, you know, Gary's not an engineer either, but he know, he has some history with the things that he's concerned. And I think we need to make sure, before we go forward any further, that we, we deal with it. I mean, that we make sure that we're not gonna have issues.
Thank you. I guess I'm hearing you
Excuse me.
You have a question?
I just wanna make the statement that we need to be cognizant of grant timeframes and application times, and so we should always, I, I believe we should put in for grants as we're looking at this, and it was all presented. I'm just, I, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure if it directly addressed the auger anchoring system. So, that's my only question. But we need to be open to grant opportunities and take advantage of them.
Thank you. I think I hear the rest of you, gentlemen, indicating that you would like to hear back from Horstley Witten and/or GAF and/or the individuals who proposed this to the town, is that correct? Along with Mr. Buckminster? Yeah, is that correct? Mr. Slavin, it was your, you spoke first. You wanna make a motion to ask them to come back in?
Make a motion to ask, if possible, engineers with both the initial project and the second project to come in, or at least give us a written report that we can read, so we can make a, a proper judgment on this.
Do you prefer a written report, or, or?
Either, either one.
Okay.
Because I'd like, I'd like to get this done in the next week or so, because there is a timeframe on this grant. And there's only two locations in Buzz's Bay Pict. We were one of them. They'll have to move almost immediately if this doesn't happen.
Right. Okay, thank you. Mr. Troppiano?
I, I don't, I don't wanna have a written report. It's okay if they bring one with them, but I wanna be able to talk to them and ask the questions.
I modify my motion to basically come in.
Have a second to that motion?
I'd like to have Gary in that meeting as well.
Yes, we, I think that's understood. Is there a second to Mr. Slavin's motion, and it would be that we also wanna be able to a, a, ask them questions? Okay, motion made and seconded. Is there any, are there any further questions or concerns about the motion? I will call for a roll call vote. Mr. Minis?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Troppiano? Myself, yes. So, we will do that. The next
Madam Chair, before we, we move on, I just let in the motion sort of, sort of. We may need to reach out. I think it was through the the grant, so I think it was Joe Costas' group that actually paid for it. We should really reach out to, to Dr. Costa on it. I have no problem paying whatever the fee is for them to come, to make sure this is all, all safe and right. The idea that we can suddenly compel an engineer to magically be here next week might be a little aggressive.
Okay. Can we leave it in your hands to arrange the presentation by? the grant writer and supporting documents?
No.
Oh, thanks a whole lot. Okay, I'll get the information from you. And I, I hear what you say. The next item on the agenda is the gift from, to the library. Mr. Tropiano, do you have that documentation in front of you, bud?
Uh, yeah, I moved. Do we accept the $5,000 grant?
From?
I don't have who it's from. It just says a $5,000 grant.
Okay, it's Trade Wins LLC and is part of their HCA. Okay.
Not on my paper.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Are there any further questions or comments? Then I will call for a roll call vote to accept the donation. Mr. Munees?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes, and thank you.
Yes, Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I think we should thank the, you know, especially the, the owners and operators of Trade Wins. This is not something they had to do. They're the ones that brought this up. And it's very generous and we appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. We have a letter all set to go to them, which is, it's great. And the, it's, it's, it's great that we have people supporting the library. So the next item on the agenda is the continued discussion and voting on recommending articles for 2021 Annual Fall Town Meeting Warrant. And I asked Mr. Sullivan earlier if he had any, that he was going to be presenting any information on, and he said no. And so we will go to the first petition article on tonight's agenda, which is item number 17. And the presenter will be Jody Sandigate. Would you let Sandigate in, please? Good evening, Ms. Sandigate. How are you? You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you so much. You are presenting Article 17.
Citizens petition. I thought it was Article 19, but in any event.
Oh, it may be. I, no, I have it as 17. It's the citizens petition about Zoom meetings.
Yes, correct.
Yes. Go ahead.
Well, thank you for allowing me the time to come and address the board. This particular article, I'm a little bit passionate about. I feel like if anything came from the pandemic in a positive, it's that we've been able to expand citizen participation remotely. Let me get my notes here. Zoom access is equal access for all. Public hearings have been being held throughout the pandemic where people who normally couldn't participate have been. There's a variety of reasons why people wouldn't be able to participate. This meeting, for example, started at seven o'clock. In a typical day of a working mother or working family, you know, they work nine to five, and they pick the kids up at school, and now they shouldn't be left with, do I go to the town meeting and participate, or do I have to stay home with my children and work on homework? There is a very high elderly and disabled population in the community, and they are being disenfranchised each and every time a meeting takes place that doesn't include remote participation. I've spoken to people of all different age groups and nobody has said that they wouldn't like this to continue. I mean, it's fairly easy. We've been doing it. The governor, Governor Baker, his administration is actually advocating it. The town of Stowe and Framingham, they have already incorporated it in. And I'm working on a spreadsheet and a PowerPoint. I'm going to be forwarding it to each and every one of you on the selectmen. By the end of the week, I will be sending it off in an email so that you can get a better picture of what our other communities are doing. I think now is the time that Wareham could actually become forward thinking. We need to, let me tell you, the Baker administration is advocating for, for this to continue, and so is in a lot of legislative legislators across the state. With your support, Wareham can act on the innovations and lessons learned during the pandemic. We already have, it's already working. I'm talking to you right now. So the money isn't an issue. The technology isn't an issue. There's grants out there. Money has come in from COVID. We have the three channels, I believe it is, from the WCTV that is already doing that. Wareham can set the pace and we can begin to show our neighboring communities and our citizens that we're a forward-thinking community. Supporting Article 19 supports not only ongoing government transparency, but it shows that Wareham welcomes public engagement each and every time a meeting takes place. I know, for instance, my uncle, he is a resident of a skilled nursing facility here in town, and he can't just very well get up and come to a meeting if he want. My father, he's legally blind. After this meeting, I'm going to go take care of him. And I was sitting here and I'm thinking, well, I hope I get done soon enough so I could go and do what I need to do to put him to bed. But then I was saying, no, I have remote access. I don't really need to worry about the time or readjusting my schedule because I can just bring you guys along with me. I just think that continuing this is, it's, it's the right thing to do, you know, for so many reasons.
Thank you. And, and you said that you would be sending some additional information to us?
I have all kinds of, you know, I just want to put together properly and send you the certain links to look at comparing what the other towns are doing. And it's, it, to me, it's a no-brainer.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to ask for the individuals, each one of my peers to have, whether they have questions of you, and you would be asked to answer them. Mr. Munees, do you have any questions, sir?
Yeah, how come you always ask me first every time?
Because you're, because you're there.
So anyhow, I attended the webinar where there was a presentation on hybrid meetings from the towns that Ms. Sandigate referenced. And there were some, some issues they had to work out. And I am a proponent and in favor of hybrid meetings, at least during the time that we can do it under executive order, and we'll have to wait and see what happens after the executive order expires as far as our ability to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Slaven?
You'll have to pull up with me as I go through. I have one basic issue to start with. We operate under Robert's rules. Under Robert's rules, the chairman of any committee can have citizens' participation or not. And most of them don't. We only have a few committees that actually have that. Anything that's a public hearing, we do have to make it available to the public. Right now, obviously, we use Zoom. One of the biggest issues for Zoom right now is the way we have a contract with WCTV. They don't have enough bodies, equipment and money to do this. So this becomes an issue. Again, because this is a bylaw, this goes to the Attorney General for approval. And everything has to be dialed in exactly. And as a member of the Board of Directors of Mass Municipal Association, my information that we get back is that most likely the emergency order that put this in place will be removed by the governor somewhere down the line. Again, if you have Zoom, you can continue it. There's no reason not to. But if we're going to put something in as a bylaw and then two or three months or four months now, all of a sudden, it's, it's not allowed by the governor. You've gone ahead and done something which you won't even have an answer back in time. And I just think that if they want to do this, I would wait until the Spring Town Meeting to see what the state's actually going to do. And if they're going to put something in that allows us to do it, to go ahead and do it. So my issue is not with the actual way the article is written. You did mention town meeting, which is not in the article here, thankfully, because town meeting with a a Zoom content to a couple of towns have tried it. It's not worked out well at all. But I would ask that maybe we reconsider and bring it back in the spring when we know exactly what we can and can't do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slaven. Mr. Titlebaum?
Yeah, I don't have any questions of Ms. Sandigate. I, I, I would ask what town council thinks of this. Both parts, both portions of it, I would say, because this is sort of a two-parter.
Can you be more specific about what your question is, sir, so that?
Well, well, part of it was the Zoom issue, but also I, I guess my question is regarding whether boards can exercise a right, you know, corporate right to protect themselves in matters of litigation. Whether the open meeting law controls on this matter.
Thank you.
With the article past muster.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen.
Opinion, and I know that, you know, predictions are sometimes just exactly that.
Mr. Bowen, if you choose to answer.
Well, I thought the Red Sox were going to lose in the wild playoff game, so I don't. But.
Me, too.
We all did.
On a personal level, I find this article very interesting because about, oh, maybe two year, year and a half ago, I wrote a piece of legislation that would have allowed smaller towns to have their town meetings held by Zoom. You know, a, a town with maybe 1,000 people in it where you obviously wouldn't have 1,000 people showing up at town meeting, which that should be kind of pouncy. But unfortunately, the legislature wasn't willing to go for that. The legislature did look favorably on a piece of law that I helped write that allowed representative town meetings to meet by Zoom. So this, this is a subject that's very interesting to me. And, you know, my, my, and I, and I certainly understand the, the difficulty of citizen participation. You know, we're not like the 1700s anymore. But, you know, I think that were I going to do a Zoom authorization of this type, I probably wouldn't try to do it as a bylaw. And I'll tell you why in a minute. I probably would have tried to do it as a special act. And here's, here's the reason. The only reason that we currently are allowed to do Zoom meetings is because the governor exercised his authority to, to give an order under the Civil Defense Act of, I think it's the Civil Defense Act of 1950, which because of the emergency situation allowed the governor to overrule certain provisions of the open meeting law. The way it had been in the past was under Chapter 38, Section 20, and that's the operative section of the open meeting law. It would have been illegal for us to have Zoom meetings because what the law said, with the exception of certain limited remote participation for board members, was that you had to be physical, a majority had to be physically present. So the governor issued this order, the governor through his act was letting us do what we're doing. And Selectman Slaven kind of touched on it, which is what happens when the governor's emergency order lapses. Well, I think then we by law are required to go back to the old way of doing things. And my, my real fear here is that once that order lapses, and I, and I couldn't tell you when that's going to happen, this proposal would be found, would be against the open meeting law. And so I think the risk here is that if this were approved as a general bylaw, it would go to the Attorney General and be disapproved because there's a pecking order of law as to which takes authority. And state law takes precedence over towns' bylaws. And certainly in the case of the open meeting law, a general bylaw that conflicted with the open meeting law would be found invalid. So I think, you know, had this been a petition for special legislation, you wouldn't have had that problem because when you have special legislation, you're creating a law that lets you do what you want to do. A general bylaw doesn't do that. So I, I think that's going to prove to be a real problem with this one. Yeah, I'd love to see these, what the other towns are doing, but and I'd look forward to seeing that just for educational reasons. I suspect that what they're doing is probably under the rubric of the governor's declaration rather than anything that tries to create a new law. But, you know, I'd certainly love to see what Ms. Sandigate has. And if I could get copied on that, I'd appreciate it. There's another issue in here that I think that probably also would have been best addressed through special legislation. Part of the open meeting was Chapter 38, Section 20. And it's subsection G deals with the authority of each chairman of a board to regulate the conduct of that board during the course of the meeting. So when you get to the closing paragraph or second to last paragraph regarding comments, if that were a general bylaw, it would conflict with Chapter 38, Section 20, Subsection G. So I think you'll also run into a problem with the AG on that one. Certainly, if this were a petition for special legislation, that's a different matter. But as a general bylaw, I think you're going to have an issue there. So, you know, I certainly understand the reasoning behind this and have tried to do things like this myself through the legislature. I think that's probably the way that this would have to go in order to have effect. So that's my opinion.
Thank you very much. Does that answer your question, Mr. Titlebaum?
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tropiano, do you have any questions or comments, sir?
I do not.
Thank you. I don't think I have anything, any further questions. Ms. Sandigate, I want to thank you very much for your time this evening and for the efforts that you have put into this. And we will vote at the end of the meeting as to whether we will be recommending this to the town meeting or not. And you're welcome to stay as a, an attendee, not a participant. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You as well. The next article that we would be discussing would be the, the change of the makeup and the manner of the selection to the WRA citizens, to the WRA, which is, which is a citizens' particip- game talk, citizens' petition. And the lead petitioner is Brenda Exstrom, so I would ask that she be let in, please. Thank you. Ms. Exstrom, we can neither see you nor hear you.
I don't know why you can't see me. I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
We just got your voice. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I'm on my daughter's laptop, so you could see me. I did have it there a minute ago, just a minute.
Okay.
I'm going to have a child help me because I'm incompetent with this stuff. There we go. Hello.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Exstrom. How are you this evening?
Good. How are you, Jim, in White Side?
I'm fine, thank you. We will ask you to present your article. And then through me, each of the board members will have an opportunity to ask you questions or make comments. And you will be.
I think that the note and notice, if it, if it taught me one thing, it taught me that there's a lot of people in this town that are passionate about the direction of the town. And so the current redevelopment authority has been in. has been going for a few years, and I mean no disrespect to anyone who's on it because three people that I'm talking to are on it. But I look at it and I see that as selectmen, as a former selectman, I know how busy you guys are. And I know as a former selectman, how busy a town administrator is and how busy a town planner is. And I think that this is a great opportunity to get the people in this town involved in the direction of the town to take it away from people who have such a full plate as it is that it seems that it doesn't, a lot doesn't get done. And, and I think that we need wider, more voices, more diverse voices, and a direction where if we're doing election on, based on redevelopment, that people can actually give what they think we should be doing, where we should be going with things, and have it, you know, have people vote that yes, we're in favor of this, or no, we don't like these ideas. So I just think it should be changed. That's all.
Thank you. For the audience that may not have read the petition, could you explain what it is that you are recommending it be changed to?
I'm recommending that it be changed to three appointed members and four elected members. So that you would, you would elect for five-year terms, because I do know that when you're dealing with with real estate and things like that, things don't turn over in six months or a year. So that four of them will be elected and three will be appointed by the Board of Selectmen. So you will still have a say, you'll still have, you know, you'll still be able to, you know, give your opinion, and it would, and it would carry, you know, a weight on the board because it would be three members. But that the elected people, which would be direct representation from the town, that they would have something to say.
Thank you. Mr. Slaven, do you have any questions or comments, sir?
Me, you know, I've been kind of vocal that I wasn't very happy with some of the things the WRA had been doing a few things there. So obviously, I'm a little biased with this initially, but I do have some initial problems with some of this. When I talked about reorganizing, I wanted to have a five-member board or whatever, basically, and people that would be qualified either through developers, bankers, real estate people who do development, et cetera. I have a lot of experience with the redevelopment authorities, especially since Serp Ed has the RESC, which basically works with redevelopment authorities in the 27 communities. And they normally would have as an executive director, and the membership is all made up of professional people in that particular type of field, you know, as it goes. So I'm a little concerned that we have, excuse my explanation here, because I'm obviously in the same position, a popularity contest of four people being voted on. Doesn't mean they have any skills in what they're doing, it's just the way it is there. And I'm a little concerned at how that's gonna work, because the redevelopment authority is really a, it's almost like, it's like normally a 501(c)(3), it's a separate entity from the town, actually. And it needs to have a group that's really focused on what they're doing. It's nice to have people who volunteer to want to do it, but the bottom line is if they don't have the skills, and this does require quite a few skills, it's really not gonna work.
Well, if I may, if I-
Excuse me.
Please let me finish.
Excuse me.
Let me finish, Brenda, then you can go.
Sure, honey. Thanks.
Excuse me, you will be going through me.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
So these are just the things, you know, the basic, the basic I don't have a problem with, it's just that I'm concerned of the makeup of how we're gonna do it. Thank you. Sorry, Brenda.
Thank you.
No, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I, I, I apologize.
Okay. Do you choose to respond to him?
I do. Please, thank you. I do understand where Mr. Slaven is coming from. However, and again, no disrespect, because I was on the Board of Selectmen, but we have on the current board, we have two members of the Board of Selectmen, and, you know, there is really no qualifications to be a member of the Board of Selectmen. So we have made it so you have two people with no qualifications, a planner, who I have the planner and the town administrator as ex officio members, non-voting members. We would like their professional expertise, but not necessarily them telling us what to do with our town. That was why I did it that way. And as far as the elections, elected members, if the Board of Selectmen choose to put on, I had put recommendations in their business, I think real estate and environmental or something, I don't have it in front of me. But if the board chooses to be more stringent with what, who or what they want on it, it's fine. I don't think it's a popularity contest. I think if somebody comes up and has no idea or decides, you know, I, I, you know, I just want to be on it so I can be on something. I don't think people would vote for them. I think, believe me, if anyone, if any of you got up running for selectmen and said, I want to put a casino on a horse track up Glen Charlie Road, you wouldn't have won. That's what these people will have to be doing. Talking about what they want to do with Recovery Road. Talk about what was going on when people were thinking about Littleton Drive. So I think that trying to say, oh, because it's professionals, or we're, you know, what we have right now is certainly not anything greater than what the people in this town could do. And if it's a businessman who wants to participate, then by all means, run for the position.
Thank you.
The way it is now, I don't-
Thank you, Ms. Exstrom.
Thank you.
I will just remind you that I was a commercial banker for 23 years, and I was a senior vice president. So-
And you were on the issue.
Excuse me. Thank you. Mr. Muniz, do you have any questions, sir, or comments?
Yeah.
Good.
As the redevelopment authority is structured now, it's employee-centric, with two select persons and two employees. There's a reporting order, and I cannot, I cannot participate in deliberation because we, it would become a quorum of the selectmen as it's set up now. So when the redevelopment authority is meeting, I can go there and listen, but I really can't participate. So there's an issue, there's a concern for me there. I think there should be more resident non-elected officials being represented. And I do agree, and as I think the article states, you know, someone from real estate or development or finance would be the preference of people appointed hopefully by the Board of Selectmen. So and as, I think we don't have a lot of discussion about the direction of what we'd like to see the town go as a board with our representatives on the redevelopment authority. And I just think it would be good for having more input and a broader perspective and view. Now, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muniz. Mr. Tropiano, do you have any questions or comments, sir?
Okay, so when we created Cedar, I was on that board that started the process, and actually, I believe that Ms. Exstrom signed into, signed the final documents that made Cedar exist. Cedar did absolutely nothing for years and years and years, no accomplishments, zero. And I remember watching the whole thing unfold and feeling how bad it was because the reason why we did Cedar was because Gus Jankopolis kind of was running his own little world down there, and everybody was complaining, and there was all kinds of stuff going on. And I don't know if you guys all, you probably don't and don't remember this, but I do. And it was, it was problematic, so we started to set up this, this new Cedar, so to speak. And it, it, it did nothing. It did, it really accomplished zero. And in fact, you know, basically, it became an organization that ran a grant, and that was all it ever did the entire time that it existed. And so we, we then redeveloped a new thing when I came on the board this time and created the, the board that we have now. And I think in the first year, they accomplished more than Cedar accomplished the entire, I know it did, because they did nothing. So I know they accomplished way more. Stuff got done. And I think the whole point of having officials on there, especially like Derek and, Derek and the planner and so on, being professional, really works well. Because, you know, look, they know the direction that's important. They, they know what's going on. They, they keep their ears to the ground. They're always involved and so on. And then the board gets to direct it a little bit. It comes back to us every time. Whatever's on, it comes back to us. We decide whether, in fact, not just us, town meeting decides what's gonna be purview and so on and so forth. And I, I just can't see going back to another board, and especially another elected board? Are you kidding me? I mean, I, you know, this, this is crazy, you know, they, everybody has had this thing where they want to take more and more authority and more and more away from the Board of Selectmen. Well, you know, it's not the majority, by the way. It's a select group of people who just don't happen to like the selectmen and like the direction they go in. And they go out and they try to vote against us every time, and they, and it doesn't work. And, you know, of course, we come back and we do what we do. And we look at things as a broad picture, very broad picture, because that's what selectmen have to do. I don't know how anybody else did it, but it's a broad picture. It's not what this group wants to do, or what this board wants to do, or what this group wants to do, or what this. All of that is taken into account, and we try to do it in a very broad picture. Okay? And I think, you know, we've done a hell of a job. I think Peter, one heck of a job is the chair on that committee, getting stuff done. I mean, look at Littleton Place. Look at these kinds of things that are coming. They never built one thing. Not one. Not one thing. I was disappointed like you read about, about how bad Cedar came out. It just didn't work. I mean, the grant management, yay, you know? It just didn't work.
Madam Chair, through you.
No.
I just want to say I was not involved with Cedar. It was before my time.
Well, you were.
Thank you.
I was not involved.
I, excuse me.
Young topless.
If you continue to interrupt, I will have WCTV remove you from the participants.
Well, if I miss Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm not gonna sit here and have him continue to lie. I did, I was not involved.
Excuse me. Thank you. Mr. Tropiano, are you through with your comments, sir?
So if you, if you called, then you weren't paying attention.
Mr. Tropiano, are you through with your comments, sir?
I am through with my comments. I, I like the way the board's set up. I think it works well, and I would like to see it continue to be that way.
Thank you very much. Mr. Titlebaum, do you choose to comment or question?
Yeah. You know, I, I don't know, I don't remember who was on the Board of Selectmen back in the day when the Cedar was created. And, and I knew quite a few of the people who were on there, and they were good people. They were well-meaning people. But for whatever reason, and we had, you know, there were issues in the planning office occasionally. At times, we had a part-time planner. But for whatever reason, and, you know, I don't want to be accusatory here, Patrick is right that not a lot got accomplished. They came before us with some internal issues, I want to say, back in 2017. And they were having issues between members, and they wanted the selectmen to get involved and, you know, do this, that, and the other thing. And, you know, one of the things that I said at the time was, you know, I wish, you know, we didn't have to have you coming before us with these issues. I wish you were coming to us with a redevelopment strategy. I wish you were coming to us with a redevelopment plan that you wanted us to put on a town meeting warrant for town meeting to vote upon. And by the way, there is public, that is the public input on that. We can't just jam a redevelopment plan down anybody's throat. We don't have that ability. We've got to go to town meeting. We've got to present it. And typically, when you have a redevelopment plan, you've got zoning components in it. And once you throw zoning components in it, now you need a two-thirds vote. And if a two-thirds vote isn't enough of a reflection of the townspeople's will, I don't know what is. Regarding what we do, right now, we have two town employees on the board, full-time employees. I know we're special employees, but I mean, leaving us aside as elected officials. That's the town planner, and that's the town administrator. I see in this article that the town planner and the town administrator are not asked to participate, but they're actually commanded to because of the use of the word "shall" attend the meetings. The town administrator works under contract for the town through the contracts that we approve with him as the Board of Selectmen. So town meeting can't tell the town administrator really to do much of anything when it comes to his own actions. And with regard to the planner, he's a union employee. So, you know, it's doubly bad there in terms of what was doing this. When we put this together, it was with the willingness of the town administrator and the town planner to participate. Rather than feeling overburdened, they were delighted at the opportunity to do this. Our meetings are held in public. We have media there. When we've gone to town meeting, we've asked for votes. We asked for a vote for Littleton Drive. We asked for a vote to create the authority, and given that the vote wasn't unanimous, but it was by a strong majority, I think the public had confidence that this would be the right direction. When we asked for the Littleton Drive property to be assigned to us, we said, we're gonna get at least 40 units of senior affordable housing out there. Now, we would have liked to have done all senior affordable housing out there, but unfortunately, the state doesn't let you do that with, well, I shouldn't say that. They could let you do that with land, but then you go to the absolute bottom of the tax credit list, and you never see the financing. You're in it for five, six, eight rounds before they even think about you. Littleton Drive right now has received financing for the senior portion and is in the process of getting the state financing for the non-senior portion. This actually is something different that the state has done with that, because typically, look, they know-
Excuse me, I will ask you to be removed, I will have you removed from the meeting if you continue to interrupt. Thank you. Mr. Titlebaum?
Yeah, so anyway, DHCD is on our side in this because they knew of our strong interest in the senior component out there. They almost never approve financing for a two-phase project where the senior, where the senior component and approve the senior component first. We made a compelling presentation for that. With regard to your concerns for the busyness of the town administrator and the town planner, again, they embraced the idea, and they actually do the work, and this is a point that I don't think has been considered. All of the redevelopments around here that follow the typical 121(b) thing, where you got four elected, one appointed, and that, that's the usual setup. And that's, that's the kind where you just vote a town meeting to do that, because you don't have to go to the legislature, because you're not doing a special act. Just about all of them hire a professional director. Now, in a city, of course, you know, a professional director and a staff. But in a town, you know, they even have a professional director in there. So we can't compel the town planner to do this. We can't compel the town administrator to do this. So where's the money gonna come from to give this, this, this new outfit, you know, professional direction? It's gonna cost money. And that's just a simple fact. And I'll be honest with you, I'm proud of the accomplishments of the redevelopment authority. We reached out to many people in the community and put together a redevelopment strategy that targeted four areas in town. It was Main Street, Wareham Village, that's the top priority. We are currently working with Tricia Wertz to gain input and thought on what goes on there because we feel that's important. We decided not to go ahead with a rezoning article or support a rezoning article because we wanted to pull back and sort of get the sense of the public, and also to explain the sorts of things that private investors, which you need to do any kind of redevelopment, the town doesn't have the money to just pour into, you know, neighborhoods and blighted areas. which you need to do any kind of redevelopment. The town doesn't have the money to just pour into, you know, neighborhoods and blighted areas. Uh, so we've we've got to be working on that. Uh, we just got a grant to do uh, the urban renewal plan, which is gonna be at the heart of any redevelopment of Wareham Village. So we're making things happen. And so, you know, obviously I'm on it, but and wouldn't support it. But even if I were just, you know, a member of the Board of Selectmen, I wouldn't support this because I know what happened for fourteen years. And I know what's happening now. And, you know, input is great, but results are greater. And we're getting results and I don't see why anybody would want to mess with it.
Thank you, Mr. Titlebaum. I have no additional comments other than because I feel pretty much um, the same as most of my peers. Um, so I will ask um, if any of you, no, you've already had your shot.
May I have one more comment? Um, may I, may I have one more comment? I I would just like to say, um, first of all, Madam Chair, when I was talking about the experience of people, I meant no disrespect to you. I'm sorry if you took it that way. Like I said, I was on the board too. And I think there's a lot of people.
Speak to the, you have.
Okay, then to the article, I would request that you and Mr. Titlebaum recuse yourselves from the vote, seeing you people are on the board. You have an interest in it.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Ekstrom, thank you very much for doing the presentation this evening. Um, will you be sending us any additional information as Ms. Sandigate was?
I would, no, I'm not.
Okay, thank you very much. Then I um, will have you leave the meeting. We will vote at the end of the meeting on these articles. And next, we will be discussing the article which was presented by Mr. Barry Cosgrove. So I will have him enter the meeting and have Ms. Ekstrom leave the meeting, please.
Going back under a rock.
Hello, can you, okay?
We can hear you, but we can't see you, sir. Are you, are we going to be able to see you or? Okay, great. Thank you very much.
There he is.
Mr. Cosgrove, you're here to present the uh, article about the collection of fees and penalties for the earth removal in the town of Wareham. Is that correct?
Yes.
Could you speak to your petition, please?
Thank you very much. Good evening. Uh, the petition is really an effort to pick up on a couple of points that have been made tonight by a a couple of uh, the members. And that is, it's a, an effort to reach out to people with what we think is a good idea and try to rally some support around something that would help the financial wherewithal of the town. Uh, lots of questions have been raised, I think, you know, for a long time about all these trucks going through town loaded with sand, where they coming from, where they going. And many people, including truck divers, have indicated to me that this is among Wareham's open secret. And I've read with interest a lot of budget challenges in your finance committee reports. And I don't need to repeat them, but even though you have an excellent bond rating, which I congratulate you for, we all know that a bond rating and the cash to, to handle shortcomings are entirely separate matters. So in thinking about this question that everyone seems to have, where's this sand coming from, where's it going? And the town has serious financial needs. I attended a MIPA meeting in Wareham back in the spring. And I listened to the CEO of Makepeace try to explain, uh, address questions from people about this. And 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 he he seemed to be struggling with it, so I made a suggestion that was video recorded and said, hey, look, um, I'm a CEO of a company. I understand it's tough to, to answer questions all the time. Why don't you just have a separate meeting and take this issue on and explain where the sand's going and shut these people up, in effect? And he agreed to do it, but he reneged. So I sent a letter to the town administrator, Mr. Sullivan and to this body. And and I said, hey, look, um, don't you think you ought to look into this? Because it may be a real revenue opportunity. And it may be that, you know, some monitoring, measuring and reporting uh, of this earth removal would be in the best interest of of the town. That produced nothing. It was mentioned a moment ago by one of your members, you know, efforts and input are great, but results are greater. And and I haven't seen any results. It seems to me that the town cannot afford, the town cannot afford to not at least do an inquiry to monitor and measure and report whether or not, whether or not, sand has been removed. And the only way you, that without appropriate licensure. The only way to do that, and your bylaw permits you to do it, is to just measure the quantity. And if you've got your hands around what the quantity is, then I think you're able to make a lot of really intelligent decisions. For example, Makepeace says they've only got seventeen hundred and fifty acres. If you find that they took ten million cubic yards of sand out of Wareham and you looked at the best management practices and other objective data that would show how much sand is needed to operate seventeen hundred and fifty bogs, and you found, for example, that that's enough sand to cover all fourteen thousand acres that they own and three feet of sand, then I think you'd probably say, you know what, maybe that guy's not nuts. Maybe there are some questions. I'm not saying that's the quantity that's been removed. What I'm saying is until you do that, you can't make a rational, sensible judgment.
Okay, Mr. Cosgrove, can you, can you explain the nuts and bolts of of your petition, please?
The nuts and bolts is to nudge this body in a, in a civil way, in a constructive way, in a polite way, to nudge this body to say, hey, look, let's have our engineers, the bylaw allows, measure, easy to do, low cost, fast, also to GIS and other mapping tools that permit this to occur or allow this to occur, and find out how much has been taken. And then go to Makepeace and don't ask them. You don't say, hey, are you complying? You say, hey, show us where it went. It's completely within your authority to do so. There are all sorts of daily truck reports, DOT regulations, state regulations that require this record-keeping of trucks anyway. So it would be a relatively easy thing to do to mo- to measure how much was taken and then to like, to to figure out where it's gone. If, for example, if, for example, a million.
Okay, may, may I just caution you, sir? Um, you have an article that has merit and I would caution you to not um, not mention names of people who might be involved or companies that might be involved. Just because I think you want to, you you want to be, you want it to be a general article about a specific kind of problem, but not, you're not targeting any particular individual or company. That would be my suggestion to you, sir.
Well, look, it's an excellent point because everybody, everybody should be regulated fairly appropriately. And if if anybody is not playing by the rules, the, the, all, all earth removal activities should be monitored very carefully. Uh, so just final wrap-up point. I, if you have a million cubic yards, just as an example, that's been removed without an appropriate permit, that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in fees minimum, minimum. And in the offending trucks, if you do the math and you use a triaxle truck, that's over forty-five thousand trucks. That's nine million bucks. It's a lot of money for this town's uh, budget for sure, or cash position for sure.
Okay.
I I guess the final point is, why not? Why would you not want to make sure that the town isn't missing an opportunity at revenue here? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cosgrove. I appreciate your presentation. Um, Mr. Slaven, do you have questions or comments and you will come through me to Mr. Cosgrove, please? You're muted.
Actually, I I'd like to again, go to town council. I'm reading this through and to me, it really seems like a referendum rather than an actual, you know, bylaw warrant article. I just want, like to get his opinion and classification what this is really.
If he chooses to answer, Mr. Slaven.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess, Madam Chairman, this is where I should uh, choose to answer.
Thank you.
I, 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 I think the petitioners know that uh, this is a referendum. Mr. Cosgrove uh, categorized this as a a nudge. Uh, so it's, I guess we would call it a nudge, not a bylaw. Uh, you know, you look at the language right in the beginning. It's very carefully chosen. See if the town will vote to urge the Board of Selectmen. And then you, the urge language is used again in the last paragraph. So, you know, I think it's pretty clear this is a referendum. And that what is being asked for is that uh, the town use the powers that are at its uh, resources to uh, look into earth removal. Now, if if I may broaden my commentary a little bit, uh, you know, this does identify a specific company. Well, you know, okay, fair enough. Uh, it, it talks about doing uh, what sounds like audits and warrantless searches. Uh, well, you know, there there may be issues there. Uh, and I think it's also important to distinguish between uh, activities that are currently under a permit, which does give us a certain scope to review what's going on as opposed to what I suspect is the broader problem, which is unpermitted earth removal. You know, that almost becomes something more in the nature. Well, I hesitate to use the word criminal, but it, that's a, that's a different situation. Uh, we have more power to inquire into records uh, under permitted activities, whereas I think on the unpermitted stuff, that's gonna be more of a, an enforcement matter. Uh, and and just in passing, I noticed the reference to the town engineer. And at first, when I, when I first read this, it's like, wait a minute, we don't have a town engineer. But then when you look at the earth removal bylaw, you know, the earth removal bylaw itself specifically references an engineer. So, uh, you know, the, I think the petitioners have chosen their, their words carefully here. Uh, and also are aware that this is a resolution, not a, not a binding vote. So the question is, you know, assuming it goes through a town meeting, you know, what do we want to do with it? So that that's my commentary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Mr. Slaven, does that um, answer your question, sir?
Yeah, that was my, when I read this, I just thought it was more like a referendum and, you know, it said, again, it's, it's asking us to, is urge, et cetera. I don't think any of that's really enforceable, so I think we should be, I don't know, maybe we can do this in our own without, because you already have a, you know, a bylaw in place for earth removal. If we have an issue, we think, you know, that we're not being taken care, we have the right to move forward and do more things with it.
Okay.
I can't see whether, I don't think this board or any, or the town administration is, I hate to use the word, I'm getting trouble for, afraid to go to a company like, you know, any of the companies around here. We have several of them that were going after because it was earth removal and we never knew it. And the GIS shows that the earth has been removed. So, you know, I know where Barry's coming from, but I think we're finally starting to move forward.
Thank you. Uh, let's see. Um, to 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 to. Where'd you go, Jim? James? James?
Yes, I'm here. I'm not sleeping.
Okay, I didn't think you were.
I.
Want to answer questions, sir?
Yeah, I I agree that um, it urges us to, at this point in time, to look into large gravel removal or 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 movement from um, who, who, whoseever properties into inquire. And I believe we have a right to inquire, um, especially on excessively large amounts of material that's been moved. And um, you know, and if they can justify the um, earth removal and um, for agricultural and or other use, then we have no qualms or issues with it. But otherwise, I mean, um, I personally have have seen vehicles leaving town from sites in Wareham from various landowners, which, um, and they go out of town. And um, and we're not talking about a hundred yards or two hundred yards. And we're talking of tens of thousands uh, of yards. And um, there's a certain responsibility we have and we just can't turn away. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mees. Um, Mr. Tropiano?
All right, yeah. So, all right. So we have, um, we have an issue. We definitely have a problem in this issue. And uh, for instance, I happen to know there's a gentleman up on Glen Charlie Road. As you first go up on the right, you go in the back, he has the same hauler hauls out of there, many truckloads per day. Been doing it for fifteen-plus years that I know of. And um, you know, he has no gravel removal permit. If you go a little further up Glen Charlie Road, you'll find uh, someone up there, uh, as you well know, Highland Inc. And they are actually uh, accounting for their gravel and giving us reports every month. And I think they're the only ones who actually have a gravel removal permit. The problem with Wareham is, it sits on these terrific veins of sand and they're everywhere. And you know, what you make concrete out of and what you do septics out of and, well, everybody wants sand. Uh, they just do. And it becomes a big deal. And uh, and there's, without a doubt, there are many individuals in this town taking gravel out of here that goes well beyond their agricultural use. And uh, I'm not saying, I I I can't believe that that's something that we shouldn't look at. And by the way, that would sit in the uh, building inspector's office, uh, who needs to do some enforcement uh, with our bylaw, which he's responsible for. Um, I remember when I was the building inspector in Bellingham many years ago, I've had these very same issues. And they had a lot of sand and chasing these people down the street, trucks, to make sure that we got the right things and that they were doing the right stuff and getting their permits in line and so on was a a difficult task. There's lots and lots of uh, of stuff going on like this. And, you know, Mr. Cosgrove's right. I'm not sure that a, that, that this kind of thing is gonna mean anything, you know, what he says. But I think he was right to come to us and say, you know what, there's a problem here. Because I think he's right. Jim's been pointing it out for months and months. I I guess not even months, years, actually, Jim, haven't you? I think when he first started on the board, he was after this. And and he's right. Um, I know that there's people who take land out of agricultural use. And once they take it out of agricultural use, they have, they have to come for permits after that, if they take any gravel out of there. Because it's no longer protected by an agriculture use. So there is lots of that stuff going on. And yeah, I think we need to look into this. I think, I I, you know, I, Mr. Cosgrove, I think you're right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tropiano. Mr. Titlebaum?
Yeah, uh, let me preface my remarks by saying that, uh, you know, people sometimes think the Board of Selectmen, uh, or Makepeace's pocket, or we do their bidding and so on and so forth. I'm the guy that pushed the board to sue them over the dam, so like that, you you don't have to apply that label to me. Um, and I have no problem, uh, you know, taking them to task when I think they need it. Uh, the issue I have here is exactly the one that Attorney Bowen raised. Uh, we're talking about a fourth amendment of the US Constitution, uh, which prohibits uh, searches without warrants and requires warrants to be issued only when there is probable cause. And by naming one company, uh, and expecting us to go out there and, you know, try to order them, invade their property, do anything without an administrative search warrant, just can't happen. And here's the issue with an administrative search warrant. You're not gonna be able to go to a judge and say, Your Honor, we need to get on eighty Makepeace's property and see just what the hell they're doing out there, because we see a lot of trucks. That's not gonna cut the mustard with any judge i- in this country. Um, if anyone has evidence that eighty Makepeace or any other landowner is removing sand from their property and they're doing it, uh, you know, without the benefit of one of the exemptions, uh, in this case, I guess it would be the agricultural exemption. Uh, and they have, you know, concrete evidence that sand is being dug, sand is being moved, and sand is being sold, then 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 please go to file a formal complaint with the Director of Inspection Services, the Building Commissioner. He is the code enforcement officer for the town. But for us to sit here and, you know, send people out on, I don't want to call them wild goose chases, because I suppose it's possible they might find something. But for us to initiate action here is just gonna. But for us to initiate action here is just going to get us landed in court. So I would urge Mr. Cosgrove and anyone else who has any actual evidence uh, of any malfeasance, of any sand being uh, taken out of the town, well, off premises, doesn't have to be out of Wareham. I mean, if you dig, if I dig sand in my backyard and sell it to Joe next door, I need an earth removal permit. That's just the way it goes. But, you know, please do it that way. I I don't think this article really accomplishes anything. Uh, except to highlight the issue. So I suppose if that was the intent, that that's fine. But the the selectmen aren't the ones who can do much about this until it is reported to us from the Director of Inspeccional Services that there is a problem. The Director in Inspeccional Services is is uh, you know, going to act on complaints. And that's the, that's the enforcement process for all of our code. You know, we get complaints, the Director of Inspeccional Services looks at them, he investigates them. And then if it's a matter that comes under our purview, like earth removal, he would refer it to us. If it's the planning board, he'd refer it to them, wherever it goes. So that's the system we're under. Listen, I'd be delighted if somebody could prove that eighty Makepeace said, you know, somehow uh, moved five, you know, million cubic yards of sand out of town, and we could get that, we could get the money for that. But you got to have the proof. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Um, no, I'm not going to allow any further comments.
Want to make point that I didn't say anything, I didn't make any particular landowner, especially eighty Makepeace in my comments, and I want people to know that. I do have a particular guy who I know of. And I know of the trucking company that's been hauling out of there for years and years, and I just found it out recently. And it will get to the inspector in due course.
Thank you. Um, I have no additional comments. Mr. Cosgrove, I appreciate your bringing your petition to us. I think what I hear is that it is a nudge. Um, and we will not be voting on it until later on in the evening, but I appreciate it bringing the information to us. And I would suggest that as most of the gentlemen have said, if you actually do have proof of something, that you bring it to the Inspeccional Services Director.
Could I um, ask a question through Mrs. Whiteside to Attorney Bowen?
Yeah, if he chooses to answer.
Um, as this is a town bylaw, not a zoning bylaw, who is the enforcement um, authority on this?
You talking about the earth removal?
Correct. It's a town bylaw, not a zoning bylaw.
Thank you. If he chooses to answer.
If not.
Guess not. Okay.
Well, while we're waiting, Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I just want to say hi to Barry. We've emailed a few times. It's good to see a face. So.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cosgrove. Um, and we will ask you to exit the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Mees, when Mr. Bowen is available, I'll have him answer your question. Oh, maybe? No? Okay. Um, the last one is um, the repurpose of the Deacon School, and I would ask that Leslie Edward Davis be led into the meeting, please. Rich, if you're there, um, Mr. Mees did have a question. So.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was uh,
That's okay.
I started, I started giving an answer, uh, realizing that, later realizing that I had muted myself, so
Okay.
Sorry, not so bright. Uh, I'm uh, taking a look at the bylaw because I believe there is some language on it. If you could just give me a minute, I'll get right back to you on it.
Okay, we'll let Ms. Davis do her presentation and then come back to it, Mr. Mees. Is that okay?
Oh, that's fine.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Um, good evening, Ms. Davis.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. I appreciate you having me. Um, I did ask for permission to share my screen because I have some slides to show.
Yes, please.
Uh, okay, it looks like I have permission. Okay, so um, this is a longer presentation than what I'm going to go through tonight. I sent it all uh, to all of you by email so that you can look at it at your leisure. It does have a lot of information. I can't take credit for all of it. It uh, has been put together by about fifteen people who are part of our working group, all residents of Wareham, from all different walks of life uh, who've done the research and really thought deeply about uh, this project. And um, yeah, so that it's, it's what we have come to out of uh, months of looking at this. And I really um, I'm excited to present this to you. Um, I'm heartened by uh, Mr. Titlebaum's comments at the beginning of the meeting tonight, that when we all put our efforts together and work toward a common goal, we can really make something extraordinary happen. Everyone's sort of putting a puzzle piece in, and I really think that's absolutely the case with um, repurposing Deacon School into a uh, multi-generational community center uh, for Wareham. Um, a lot of people uh, wonder if we can afford it. And my uh, and our committee's uh, response is, we can't afford not to miss an opportunity to use an existing resource that we have at our disposal and repurpose it for existing town needs. Um, those town needs are the following. Um, we could use uh, Deacon's amenities, which are a huge kitchen, industrial-grade kitchen, a cafeteria, a stage, a gymnasium for all of these different community needs that are currently housed in smaller, less ideal locations. For community meals, for senior luncheons, for uh, craft activities, classes, um, fitness uh, classes, theater productions. The COA has had a long-time dream of doing dinner and a movie. It would be perfect in that space. Um, we could have a food pantry on site. We could do cooking classes. We could have a shared-use kitchen, which is something that the Baker Administration has advocated. It's a kitchen where small entrepreneurs have access to an industrial kitchen, um, so that they can uh, further their work that involves food. Um, the classroom spaces there offer perfect location for early education, after-school programs, giving our working parents support that they need, giving our children the best start. They also are a perfect location for a co-working space, which is a shared workspace. Lots of um, work-from-home folks, which we have more of because of the pandemic, and independent um, uh, professionals like architects and attorneys love co-working spaces because it's a great mix of people who are out in the community doing interesting things. It's an opportunity to network. It's a great way to get out of your house if you're like me and you work from home. Um, and it's very popular and supported also by um, the Baker Administration right now as a way to grow um, the economy. Um, we could also put a maker space there, which is a kind of um, another take on a co-working space where you have access to tools, to technology, to things like a three-D printer, um, heat presses, uh, industrial tools for creating um, something that you would uh, do as an entrepreneur. Um, there's also space for adult credit and non-credit classes. Those classrooms are perfect for all of these uses. Um, the all-one level layout is so perfect for children and for our seniors. Right now, the senior center has accessibility issues, potential dangers, and all of those are negated by uh, being on the Deacon's campus. Um, the fifteen-acre site gives us so many uh, options and so much potential with the enclosed courtyard, the paved parking lot, playground, sports fields, for so many uh, activities that we could house at Deacon. It also checked so many of the boxes of our master plan, which identified the need for a community, a multi-generation, multipurpose community center that would meet all of Wareham's needs to support children and seniors and to support small business uh, through startup opportunities and incubation support. It also dovetails with a lot of uh, state initiatives. Um, it could support the age-friendly initiative, which we've been part of. It could support uh, the Baker Administration's call for more collaborative workspaces. And also for uh, goals put out in the labor market blueprint that said that we would offer more adult basic education offerings um, and that we would do more work-ready programs for youth and adults. Um, reusing schools is happening everywhere, happening all across the state and all across the country. This is one example. This is the Dover Carl Community Center in Dover, Mass. Repurposing makes so much sense. It's environmentally, it's more environmentally sustainable. It's more affordable than new construction. Often you have a building that is uh, in terms of quality, so much more um, than what you would have with today's materials. It's a very common trend right now. Uh, Caddam also repurposed their school for a community center. Lennox repurposed an old clubhouse for their community center. A lot of times you'll see recreation departments, COAs, and youth programming all in these community centers. It's definitely a, a trend happening everywhere. Um, and what I like to say about what about the money, I don't think it's as much about money as it is about vision and problem solving, because a couple of examples here of towns that are considered poorer than uh, than our town in terms of our um, per capita income, and yet they have managed to find a way to have a community center. And some of them are incredibly nice. Both of the examples here, one in Randolph and one in Holyoke, are brand-new buildings within the last decade. Uh, they have incredible amenities, and somehow they were able to figure this out. And I, I think Wareham can also figure it out. And I think Deacon is the answer to the question. I want to talk a little bit about Dover, Mass., and I know everyone will say, oh, Dover, it's, it's so rich, we, we can't compare ourselves to Dover. But I think the key about Dover is that they make their community center run on rental income from the space, and it is a net uh, attribute to the budget, not something that draws on the budget. So I, uh, along with Selectman Mees, met with the Director of Parks and Rec for Dover. He's the person who oversees the community center in conjunction with the Director of the COA there. And what we found is that um, our center kind of practs along the vision we have for the Deacon's Community Center. It's a repurposed school. It was in worse condition than Deacon's is. It's forty thousand square feet. All of the building uh, utilities and maintenance costs were offset by rental income. It operates as a net income to the town of a small amount. Um, the space was leased to organizations either on an ongoing basis or hourly rentals. They had a, at one point or another, they had a daycare, dance studio, cycling business, parent organization house there. Uh, between the Director of this uh, COA and the Director of Parks and Rec, they take care of the day-to-day programming, the organization of who is using what space when, they do the quarry checks. And then the town administrator handles the lease agreements, which is what is envisioned by this Deacon's Community Center. It's a multi-generational center. It's so successful that now twenty years after they repurposed the school, Town Meeting has approved a partial renovation of the building, partial rebuild, to give them a brand-new facility. And when we asked the Director of Parks and Rec if there were problems with this model, they said by and large, it worked very well for them. This is one possibility for how we could repurpose Deacon for a community center. Obviously, there are so many possibilities, and this is just one way to sort of visualize what could happen in the space. I won't take you through all of it, but I will highlight in the yellow here on the left, which is uh, part of the original nineteen sixty-nine building, we could house early childhood ed and after-school programs. What makes it great is that it has this entrance off to itself with a covered canopy. And it would be easy to sort of self-contain that area for those purposes. Then in this hallway, which is sort of the front of the building, not the parking lot side, we could house adult education classrooms, senior programs in the dark blue. Light blue could be the municipal co-working space. Here to the right, uh, at the other parking lot entrance, within the purple, we could have COA office space, Veterans Affairs Office space, Disability Services Office space. Then we have all of this twenty-two thousand-plus square feet of communal space, which is the huge plus of Deacon. The gym, we've got a big gym and a small gym back here in the annex. Uh, the cafeteria, the auditorium with the stage, the kitchen, and this incredible courtyard. Um, the back half here anticipates rental spaces. The blue portion here in the modular units could be a perfect food pantry. It has great access to a loading dock and to the kitchen. And the back portion um, of the nineteen seventy-four addition, we have left as flexible space. Um, in a future scenario where we define the funding, I think it would be great for senior housing, for affordable senior housing units. Lots of uh, towns in Massachusetts have repurposed schools to contain senior housing units, and it's been very successful. Uh, right now, I think if we were to um, go down this road, I think temporarily, we could take this portion of the building offline. Perhaps bring the heating and cooling down to minimal levels, not do daily cleaning there, save some money as we start up. And um, and then bring that online eventually, depending on need. This is the proposed operating budget for such an endeavor. What I would love to point out is that this presents a balanced budget without taking any new money from anywhere. Um, and it uses the Dover model as an example and other uh, community centers that we've looked at, similar funding structures. So we use current utilities based on actuals. We include a facilities operations manager who would work in conjunction with our current COA director. We include maintenance. We include the number from the uh, FY twenty-one school budget for Deacon's building uh, repairs and maintenance. We come up to about two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars, which is very in keeping with other uh, community centers that we've looked at in terms of budgets. And then what's common among community centers and senior centers is that they cobble together funding from between three and eight funding sources. It's very common. And what we've done is we've looked at their funding sources and we've um, amended them here to our purposes. We would do the rentals, which would be the largest generator of income. This scenario considers a large renter who would rent a larger space, let's say, for early education. And then some smaller renters at four, at eight hundred a month, and some smaller still rental rentals at five hundred a month. Um, it includes event rentals. It includes the co-working space, and these uh, projected amounts of memberships to use the space are below market rate for anyone around here who's charging for co-working. So it would be kind of a startup level. Um, sustaining memberships are, you know, think of your um, public radio station. Uh, mine, I I subscribe to one in New Orleans. I pay six dollars a month. And I do it every month, and I forget it even exists. If we could get a hundred groups, businesses, or individuals to do that with twenty dollars, it would create a huge um, benefit to this budget, and I think we could do it. Um, fundraising, the amount we have here is based on the FY nineteen Friends of the Library revenues and the potential for a matching grant that we identified uh, for fundraising for such a, an activity as this. Um, we also identified thirteen grants, which I have given detail in the rest of the document about that we could start to apply for. And actually, this amount, thirty thousand, is probably lowballing it. Um, once we get started and we're in, you know, year two and year three, I think we could definitely bring in more grant money than that. I think there's a lot of money left on the table right now. Um, and the adult education program uh, for credit and non-credit creative classes. Lots of people have expressed interest in this. There was a survey done by the school department in two thousand seventeen about the need for adult education. Um, I think it would be a great component to this project. So you'll see that we come to essentially a balanced budget um, with these income projections. Some uh, assumptions made. So again, that the COA Director would collaborate with the facilities manager about the day-to-day use of space using the Dover model. Um, that we may take that uh, flex, flexible space temporarily offline. And actually, if we do, that would decrease the cost, because we didn't reduce the utility costs for that. We only reduced the maintenance costs. Um, that the teams who currently access sports fields would continue that access. We love that component to this. We think it would be so great if a family could sort of make a whole day of it. They not only go to see their son or daughter um, play uh, on the fields at Deacon, but maybe they come to the community dinner that night, or they go to dinner and a movie. Um, or maybe their parent is at a class earlier and then goes to watch the game. It just could be such a one-stop scenario for so many families and individuals in Wareham. Um, and then one other assumption is that the rental of the space that is already occurring, the school already has a rental schedule um, for use of the space, that that would continue. And it, it's assumed that um, the town's liability is already in place and covering that because it's already happening. Um, I think it's, this is a practical solution to a long-term problem that we don't have an answer to. I also think it avoids a lot of waste. Uh, we put two-point-four million dollars of We put two point four million dollars of taxpayer money into fixing the roof and putting in a new boiler in Deacon within the last five years. I think personally, paying money to tear it down would be a tragedy. I also wonder about the money that we borrowed from the MSBA to make those repairs to the building. They do have the right to call back and recapture their money if we don't fulfill the service requirement. I think personally, and the committee thinks that we'd be in a better position. They do have leeway and discretion about recapturing funds. And I think we would certainly be in a better position to fend off such an attempt if we were continuing to use the school, Deacon, as an education facility along with being a community, community center. I do want to address the building codes. What we've been able to find is that if you're not doing renovation to a certain level, you don't need to bring some old grandfathered code issues up to code unless, of course, there's a safety issue. But redoing the whole building is not in the, in the plan for this. And certainly wouldn't trigger the kind of thirty percent threshold that you would get to where you would have to redo everything in the building. Also, most of the asbestos has been remediated, abated in two thousand seventeen. And to our knowledge, the only thing that remains are some ceiling tiles that would not need to be removed. I'm starting to wrap up because I know we all have lives that we need to get to. But I did want to say that I do think there are safety valves built into this model to assuage the worries and concerns of people that are legitimate. In the FY twenty-two balanced budget for Wareham, there is a line item for Deacon's expenses of seventy thousand through June thirtieth of next year. Those cover the costs of keeping the building open. They're baked in already while we line up rentals for the building to sustain it. I think it would be great and easy to do if the FY twenty-three budget also had that money baked in. It wouldn't incur any additional cost to the town. It wouldn't move money from any other programs. It would just continue to be part of the budget. The fifteen thousand dollars for the youth study is a way for us to identify any issues and allow for guidance and corrections. It's a small amount of money. It can be taken from available funds. And if the model fails after giving a fair, being given a fair shake, you can always return the building and the land to the town to transfer for sale or lease. It's always an option that would still be on the table if it doesn't work. I'm going to skip to, I just want to skip to the rentals and partnerships and then I'll, I'll be done. So the big component that we bring to the table is that we've done outreach to community partners. The very first two that we did outreach to said they are interested in renting space here and they are big community partners. So I just want to stop sharing and I want to talk briefly about South Shore Community Action Council and Damian's Pantry. I sent you both their letters of intent. I sent all the letters of intent, but I just want to read from them briefly. So the letter of intent from South Shore Community Action Council says that the CEO, Jack Cosio, is writing to express support for Deacon for Wareham and the vision of repurposing Deacon Elementary School. It's our understanding that the purpose, proposed uses include a council on aging, senior center, community meeting space, early education, veteran services, youth programming, et cetera. We currently lease space from Oak Grove Cape Verdi and Cultural Center for head start early education programming. However, the space only allows for three classrooms and will be given over for use in its entirety by the Oak Grove Cape Verdi and Cultural Center in the next few years. Given regulatory limits on the number of children per classroom and our long-term commitment to providing services for Wareham's children and families, leasing space for three classrooms is not a long-term viable solution. What they would like is to easily fill a fourth and fifth classroom and a sixth classroom could allow expansion of their services to offer an after-school program for school-aged children. They see Deacon as a perfect fit for this. I see that as a perfect fit for the community. As we've seen during the pandemic, so many women have been displaced from the workforce. They need childcare. We just saw on the paper this week that Wareham is losing other childcare options that we've had. I think it's a perfect fit. Damian's Place has also written a letter of intent that they would love to join with other community services to reside in a Deacon Community Center should that space become available. They are both paying rent. They would both bring funds to the project. And they would both bring incredible services to the community all in one place. I think with that, I'm going to wrap up. There's certainly more info to go over. There's so much that is part of going into this proposal. But I would love to take your questions.
Thank you. I'm going to start with Mr. Slaven. You're muted.
Well, I've been trying to get a community center in the town of Wareham for probably seven or eight years. We've had a start and stop with the Hammond School mainly because of funding. And that's the only area that I have concerns about is, you know, the actual funding. The building itself has certain areas that are done, but the building has other areas that require, you know, maintenance, et cetera, which is going to exceed what people are looking at. I really don't know where I stand with this, you know. I think the only thing that kind of bothers me is that we have the first seven people who signed up are going to run this in the beginning. And I'm wondering whether or not at the end of the day, they have the experience to do this or not. And it's very unusual that we have something set up where people are picked ahead of time like this, the citizens. My friend, Mr. Muniz, probably has, because he's a selectman twenty-four seven like myself, probably has to be appointed as a separate piece there. I don't think he can, and I could be wrong. You know, Mr. Bowen can, you know, chime in. But I think as a selectman, he would have to be listed as a position, you know, that allows a selectman to be there. And I'm going to leave it there because it's plus and minuses. And I just have some concerns. And one quick thing is the fifteen thousand dollars. It doesn't specify where it comes from. And when we always have any kind of article like this, we have to specify the source for funds. When there's no, no source specified, I won't get Mr. Sullivan in trouble. But if he doesn't want to do it, he doesn't have to do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chair Whitehead, could I just do a tiny response?
I think not. Let's get all the questions.
I have valuable info to just go right back to that that would answer some questions.
Are you specifically speaking about the fifteen thousand dollars?
Yes, and the constitution of the committee. Both just raised.
Fine. Those two questions only.
So I did go through years of warrant articles and most of them said from free cash or available funds. So I, I'm happy to specify, but I did not see that in the history of warrant articles. And number two, I am not going to die on the hill of this committee and how it's constructed. It's constructed with a diverse set of folks who have been, had eyes on this for months. And that's the reason it was set up this way. You, I'm sure you're all familiar with committees that come to something that they are not familiar with and also not that excited about. And that's where things wither and die. And this group of people is diverse, more diverse than any other committee in our town currently. It has people who have nonprofit administration experience, adult education experience, youth experience, experience with disability services, with veteran services, with community organizing, with contracts. But if you want to do a friendly amendment, I'm happy to see a friendly amendment. I want to see a community center. I don't care who makes it happen.
Thank you. Mr. Muniz?
I want to say thank you. Great presentation. And I think projects like this start with a vision. Then you have a plan. You put the plan into action and it becomes a reality. And I think a lot of people work very hard at this and it really should get serious consideration. And I want to thank Ms. Leslie Edwards Davis for all her hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muniz. Let's see, let's go to Mr. Tropiano. You're muted, my dear. You're muted.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Okay.
Thank you.
I have one question through you to the, did anyone talk to the town administrator about this and get any of his input or ideas about what could be done with the building or finances or anything? Did anybody have any conversation with him at all?
You may answer, Ms. Davis.
Thank you, yes. A selectman, Muniz, did.
Thank you. Mr. Tropiano?
Okay. Secondly, there are a few issues, you know, that that would have to be dealt with. Anytime you change use, it causes some issues with upgrades in the building and so on. And it depends on the use, what the use changes are. Yes, it does. It does cause a problem. Change of use changes issues and it makes.
Can you point me to the document?
Excuse me, please do not interrupt or I will have you removed.
It was just a point of information.
Excuse me.
I realize you're passionate and by the way, I love your passion. I think it's great and I think you did a very nice job in your presentation. I thought it was a pretty good job. But things that need to be answered or looked at and talked about. And that's what we're here for. And we're not here to, to do anything else. So the other thing is, I noticed a couple of things. One, you carried the budget that the school was using for maintenance over onto your plan. And at least that's what I saw. You say, in fact, it says it right on the plan, I believe. And you can answer after, you know, if she'll let you answer. You can do that. You know, obviously that wouldn't be a viable. Because, you know, the school, we end up paying for all the real bills at the schools. They, they take care of cleaning up and some minor maintenance. But in the end result, when, when, when something goes wrong with the building, they simply come to town meeting and say, hey, we got to fix this. And of course, we have to spend the money. So that's something that needs to be dealt with. And I really am concerned that there was some conversation going on and obviously with the town administrator. I don't know, Derek, did they actually talk to you about this?
He may answer.
Through you, Madam Chair. I don't know how to, how to really phrase it. Selectman Muniz had, and I had, had spoken. Are you saying we had meetings where we went over spreadsheets and really went in depth? No. Selectman Muniz had said, hey, they're doing this when the, after the article came out. And we just sort of, it would be no different than passing in a hall, I guess. So.
Thank you.
That's good. So, so my opinion is that, you know, this needs a lot of work, including the town administrator's input into finances and so on. I noticed there's a bunch of things up there about different types of income and where it was going to come from and all these kinds of things. And, you know, the town administrator is, is a whiz at finances, in case anybody doesn't know. In fact, he's the one who put this town back together after a certain group sort of destroyed it. Put it back together and I'm so proud of, to be part of it with him and get us to where we are now. But he really needs to have input into that and into the dollars and numbers and all that. And I think you should have started there, at least. Somebody should have started and met with the gentleman and had some conversation and so on. And I would like to hear what the town administrator, and I don't, you need to not answer tonight, Derek, because, you know, you can't put it together in such quickness. But I'd like to see Derek, you know, have some input to us before we decide what we're going to do with this.
Thank you. Mr. Titlebaum? You are muted, Mr. Titlebaum.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, it's a very nice professionally done presentation. I commend you for that. I do commend you for your interest in affairs and trying to, you know, come up with something that will serve and plug some gaps here, if you will, in the town's infrastructure. One of the, you know, I do have some issues with it. One of the issues I have is that some of the uses that you're talking about here, for example, you know, will be the council on aging in a senior center. Under our town charter, the town administrator controls all quote town facilities. The one actual exception to that is Tremont Nail because somehow or other that got, that got put under the selectmen at the time. I guess they thought they were the ones who had the vision for the place. You know, so I, I think there's a bit of a conflict there. And the uses, I, I know you were trying to cast a wide net. But I'm concerned that if you're talking about, you know, for example, putting a homeless shelter there with a daycare, I, I don't know that that's a great mix of populations to have together in one spot. And, you know, I know a lot of people are homeless and, you know, to no fault of their own. I know this society doesn't do a great job of taking care of the homeless very often. But I am concerned that if we build it, they will come as they seem to have done in Hyannis. So that's a concern. With regard to, there's one other thing in here. And then I've got a question that I do have some questions for the town administrator, if you'd like to answer them or at least weigh in just briefly. You know what, I'll just jump right to that first. First, if the town administrator wants to weigh in now, I mean, I'm happy to hear from him. If he doesn't, if he wants to wait, that's fine too.
I think, I think you need to direct a question to him, Mr. Titlebaum. It's really, you're, you're really questioning the proponent.
Okay. All right, I get you.
Could I reply to some of the questions?
I'm asking him, just for him to, to, to give some remarks first. Derek, what are your thoughts about the viability and feasibility of this?
If he chooses to answer.
I'm seeing it for the first time tonight. I mean, there's certain things. I, the, I think South Shore Community Action Council would certainly be willing to rent space. They, they put in a bid to continue at the, at the Oak Grove School. I think you could probably, if they're getting extra rooms, Ms. Edwards Davis, you could probably beat them up for about sixty-seven hundred.
Right, right. Exactly.
There's certain things that we need to look at. I think the staffing cost is just a little low. You're probably looking at, at that sort of management level. I would, I would book around sixty to seventy in salary. You're probably looking, I always go high on the benefits, just so you know, because I take worst-case scenario. Our sixty-eight percent coverage of their family plan would probably be about twenty-two thousand. And then you've got, you know, dental, FICA. We have to pay workers' comp, the insurance for that. So I think ninety's probably, probably a solid number for that. Just looking, the seventy thousand that's in the budget, the plan was for next year to convert that to a labor position, take it out of the expenses and put into a much-needed labor. So that's just an internal matter. That's just, you know, that's, there was a plan for that. But it's however you want to include it. The insurance to the building, we do need to consider that because we have the other building coming online. And we were expecting Deacon's to fall offline. So we wouldn't be paying to insure that. So insurance is going up no matter what because, again, we have the other school. We're expecting the other one to fall offline. The, I'm going to say it wrong, so excuse me. Good people at Dover, the Carroll Building Community Center.
I think that's right.
That's right? All right. That's about an eighteen, they're doing an eighteen million dollar renovation in there. My only concern is using the twenty-twenty numbers is when I think they've closed down portions of the building and especially during COVID-nineteen. So I'd like to see a few other years of that. I believe they're staffing, they're, they're hiring some more staffing on there. So their costs are going up. So it may not be the, the, the apples-to-apples comparison. But just something to take a look at because I, I think if people find out there's an eighteen million dollar renovation, they're going to try and compare that to Deacon's. And I don't think that's what we want to do.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so I think just going through, there, there are just a few other things that I'd picked up just to make thoughts or run a recommendations. But I'm sort of lost my space on there. So I apologize. I'll, I'll see if I can get something more together.
Thank you, Mr. Titlebaum.
Yeah, I just remembered the thing I was thinking about. I noticed that Jawan Gamble of the Community Youth Empowerment is one of the signatories here.
Yes.
Back in June, Chairman Whiteside and I actually went to him and met with them. This was after the whole Boys and Girls Club fiasco. And Shayla Tavares had sort of jumped into the breach and was running the kids, you know, the Kids Connection. And Jawan, of course, has his CYE. Jared Chadwick was there, too, as the Tigers, because he's looking for space for his cheerleaders to work out in and train in. And we also had Pastor Dave from the Bridge Church, you know, right across, you know, the street. And, you know, they were talking about space. But I was surprised to see Jawan on here as a signatory, because when we, when we talked in onset, Jawan, Shayla, and Pastor Dave all were almost adamant that they needed space in onset, because that was where the greatest need was. And so, you know, I don't know, perhaps Jawan's changed in his thinking. I don't know. I should talk to him. But this brings, does bring up a larger point, which is that we do have other buildings. We do have other spaces that also, you know, that we do have now that do require work. Hammond is one of them. That's a building that needs a new roof. It needs new sheathing. It certainly could stand a few upgrades in addition to that. I mean, I think, what was it, six or seven years ago, Kenny Fauntz was pestering us to see if we could do the siding there. The cedar shingles, of course, are, you know, pretty, I don't know if they're original equipment, but they're second-generation at best. And the cost was well into the six figures. I was astounded. So, we've got buildings that are liabilities, and I guess the question is, you know, do we address those, or do we not? Or do we go all-in on decas? Because I don't know that we have the resources to cover all of these things. But, you know, this is more in, you know, it's not directed at your proposal per se. It's just how does your proposal fit into the overall financial picture of the town and the liabilities that we have in the existing buildings? I guess I would ask, at this point, through you, Madam Chairman, I would ask Attorney Bowen for his thoughts on this.
His thoughts on what specifically?
Just the thoughts on the article. You know, he reads these things. He has a sense of, you know, whether, you know, whether articles are legal, or whether there are potential conflicts, you know, between what's in here and, you know, existing law, prior articles, bylaws, so on and so forth. So, just to sort of put his legal eye on it.
If he chooses to answer.
Well, as I, I want to stress that my comments don't go towards the very comprehensive proposal that was offered tonight. I'm only looking at the form of the article as it was put together. The, the article as it was drafted has four separate elements, and I think we need to look at each of the four to figure out what can be done and what will be difficult to do under the current language. So, starting right from the top, we've got this first paragraph. To see if the town will vote to amend the motion previously adopted for Article 10 of the 2020 Fall Town Meeting held on December 12, 2020. That was voted as part of Consent Agenda 1, in which the town voted to allow the school committee to transfer custody and care of the deca school at midnight of the final day of occupancy to the Board of Selectmen and so on. That language is a problem. Because once that town meeting closed, we no longer had the capability to amend the motion that was being offered at that town meeting. And in fact, what happened at that town meeting is you had a distinct transaction that was approved by town meeting. Now, that transaction followed a particular law that governs the transfer of custody of town property from one board for a purpose to another board for a purpose. And that's Chapter 40, Section 15A, which provides, in summary, that the custodial board has to vote by a two-thirds vote, or has to vote to transfer, declare a property surplus and decide that it should be transferred to the Board of Selectmen or such other body as town willing is, town meeting is willing to transfer. So, in this case, you had the school committee voting to declare the property surplus, to retain use of it until a particular point in time. They followed the 40-15A process. Town meeting voted to approve that transfer to the Board of Selectmen. And that vote was completed and the meeting was adjourned. So, this introductory sentence in Article 20, just, it doesn't work. The rest of the language in the first paragraph, the purposes, I'm not sure what that's apropos of, but it doesn't matter. So, that's the first issue. The second issue is in the next paragraph, which reads, uses, space allocation, leasing of the property will be determined by a committee composed of seven citizens of the town, who shall be initially comprised of the first seven names on the signatory page used to place this petition article on said one. The composition of the committee, that, that doesn't concern me, that if people want to vote it in that fashion, that's, you know, that's people's choice. So, that's not a legal issue. But there's some ambiguity here, because the way this reads, it makes it look as if this committee of seven citizens is being awarded control over leasing and use of the property. And that would present a legal issue, because, well, there's the Chapter 40, Section 15A process. Let's, if you were following 40-15A, the Board of Selectmen, who, under the now-completed vote, are the legal custodians of the building, subject to a time marker, would have to vote to declare that the property was surplus. And then town meeting would have to approve the transfer from the Board of Selectmen to this committee of seven. And that hasn't happened, and I don't see a recitation of that in here. Let's just say, arguendo, you wanted to assert that the school committee still has some custodial ability to transfer or to declare its surplus. You would need a vote of the school. I don't think that is the case. But you, at a minimum, to maintain that argument, would need the school committee to take a vote, and then town meeting to bless that transfer. And I don't see that that school committee vote has taken place, nor do I think it could take place, since they've already voted on the subject. And there's no recitation of a transfer from the school committee to the committee of seven. So, I, I know it's, it's probably gonna be hard for some people to take in, but these are very significant legal issues under the general laws. And that could present problems at a later date. Number one, it would make the custodianship of the building by the committee of seven, or whoever ended up with custody of it pursuant to this article. It would make it legally uncertain, and I think it would imperil any opportunity to borrow for property improvements, since bond council would no doubt look into this. And it might imperil any ability to get grants. So, those are issues one and two. Let's get to maybe somewhat cheerier issues. Can you commit, can you set up this committee, I'll call it a study committee if you want, committee of seven, and then, under the third paragraph, follow the manner of appointment in there? Sure, absolutely. That's something that can be done. Can the town fund that committee $15,000 for a study to investigate costs and requirements? Sure. While the proponent is absolutely right, that not every article that's ever gone before has specified in the article language where the money's gonna come from. Certainly, at the time that the motion was made, that would have to be specified, otherwise the motion would be legally defective. So, just as a heads-up, that's something that you would want to cure. And then the matter of the school committee transferring any and all tangible property that it won't be using for other buildings, controlled by it. Yeah, we have a bylaw that deals with disposition of surplus materials, but, you know, I don't see that as a significant issue that, that would get in the way of this. So, to sum up, you can't amend a concluded vote. The language doesn't comply with state law, in that you're not properly following the process for a transfer of custody to the building. And that will create issues for you when it comes time to fund any improvements. You can create a study committee and compose it, however you wish to have it composed, the group of seven petitioners, or whomever you, you think is appropriate under the motion that you make. It is possible to seek funding for the committee to study along the lines that you suggest. And sure, I think that town meeting could require the school committee to transfer equipment that it didn't need to this committee for use at the facility. So, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Mr. Titlebaum?
Well said. Thank you.
Okay. I have a couple of comments, actually, several. First of all, I think it's, it's great that so many people have so many wonderful ideas and recognize what this town needs. Is there anybody who thinks that we don't need a better Council on Aging facility? I don't think so. Is there somebody that really believes that we are providing as much services to our seniors as we could? How about childcare facilities? There are lots of things that your proposal has touched on, and they are all worthy, and they are all things that we all know we need to improve on. Grants are not endowments, and so applying for grants may mean that you get X number of dollars, but that doesn't mean that you're gonna get them the second time around, okay? Mr. Bowen has raised some interesting issues about how financing would in fact, or could in fact, be taken care of. The, somebody said, well, maybe, you know, maybe you can, you know, we've put money into this building, and maybe we're gonna have to pay that $2,400,000 for the, whatever those repairs are. I think we're really losing sight of something that is obvious. We don't have enough money to really run this town appropriately. We don't have 55 police officers. We have 44. We don't have the ability to repair all of the potholes or the streetlights. We don't have the money to create better space for the Council on Aging. We don't have the money to put a new roof on the library. We don't have a lot of things. Your proposal has touched on a lot of those things. But what it hasn't talked about is sustainability. You don't really have a business plan. You have a lot of proposals and projections based on a town that may have made a very good deal out of, you know, a reused school. And my, my issue, other than hearing from Mr. Bowen, that it may not in fact even be that, that we may not actually be able to legally vote on this, is the sustainability issue. We, the perfect example is Tremont Nail. We bought that building 17 years ago. And you mentioned, well, if it doesn't work, we could always turn it back to the town. That's probably the worst thing that you said in your presentation, because we don't want another Tremont Nail. We don't want more empty buildings. We don't have enough, we don't have the ability to dispose of some of these empty buildings that we have. We don't have the ability to take care of what we are doing right now. So, I'll, I'll put the banker's hat on. You have a dollar. And if you take $15,000, you have, if you take 15 cents from that dollar, you're taking it from someplace else. Mr. Sullivan, I'm sure, would be going, where am I gonna get the $15,000? Or any of the other funds that you, that you have mentioned. And I'm not picking on the $15,000. I'm just making a comment about the general budget for the project. Again, I think you've touched on a lot of needs for the town. I think that's why you have so much support, is that people see the needs that we have. I don't think that this is the right way to do it personally. But I want to thank you for the information that you've brought forward. I want to thank you for sending us the information and for the excellent presentation that you did this evening. And we will be voting on this at the, well, I guess you're, I guess you're the last presenter.
Could I just make a couple of point of information, just to clarify some confusion?
Certainly.
Okay. No one is proposing putting a homeless shelter at this site. Number two, if the language is confusing, it should be amended. No one is proposing that the building stay in the custody of the committee. It is a town building. We assume the town administrator is in charge of the facility. It's part of the charter. We don't want to be the custodians of the building.
Thank you.
Number three, the alternative use that you're talking about, that would bring in this revenue, brings in half a percent. It's not enough. Number four, we will never have enough money to build a million-dollar facility, a multimillion-dollar facility, to take care of these needs. We have the most expensive part now. We have the building. We can make this happen. I would love to sit down with Mr. Sullivan and anyone else to talk about where we can find the money, but the money needed is so small. It is a drop in the $71 million town budget. It is 0.38%, and that's the whole cost if we never brought in anything. And we have these high-dollar people who want to rent the space. It's also hard for us to get people to say they want to rent it when it doesn't exist yet. So, once it exists, those letters are gonna come in hand over fist.
Thank you.
So, thank you. I appreciate the time, and I really would urge you to recommend this to town meeting. It would mean a lot.
Thank you very much, Ms. Davis. Appreciate it, and thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, John. Thank you.
Okay, I will ask that you leave the meeting, and as a participant, we are now back to, we'll wait for Ms. Davis to be, leave the meeting. Okay, great. Gentlemen, we have, as I said earlier, we are not, we don't have an executive session later on after this. I had asked earlier if Mr. Sullivan was prepared to recommend information on any of the articles that are left, other than these last four articles, and he said that he was not. Mr. Muniz, I would just ask you, do you want us to make a recommendation on Article 15, which is to modify the quorum requirement? I had asked you whether you wanted to give us any other information on that, and you did not respond to that. But I'm presuming that your presentation, that when we first saw that article, was the presentation that you would give. Am I correct?
Article 15 is the quorum requirement?
The quorum requirement, yeah, where you wanted to change that. Would you like us to vote on that tonight, or would you like to speak to that?
Sure. I mean, I think the article is self-explanatory, and a supermajority of the board is required for a quorum, but only a simple majority is required for action. I believe we're the only board that is set up in that manner, and we're just trying to get a level plan. And we're just trying to get a level playing field so that we can operate as as just to be able to operate on a regular basis if someone happens to drop from the committee is on vacation. It's been an issue for a couple of months. We did have a quorum today. So that was good. We got to, you know, take action on some articles or some some motions. And I don't see it as a big issue personally, and we brought it in front of the FinCom last week. That's about all I have to say on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So would you like us to vote on it tonight? Yeah, okay, great. Thank you. Then what I
We haven't already? I thought we did this one.
I thought we did, but
Yeah, I thought we were unanimous on it.
I I just, you know, I didn't want
I mean, hey, it's a great article. I'll vote twice. I don't care.
Well, my list may not be up to date, but I, we
We can wait a week if you want to check that. That's no big issue.
Okay, all right. All right, then I will entertain a motion on the Zoom meetings citizens' participation.
Motion to not recommend.
Motion to not recommend. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to not recommend. Is there any further discussion on that motion, which is to not recommend the Zoom meeting citizens petition?
By the way, that's because of the information that I think we got from later on, it might be appropriate, but I don't think it's ready yet.
Thank you very much. All right, I'm going to do a roll call vote, and the the motion is to not recommend. Mr. Muniz?
No.
Mr. Tropiano? Mr. Slaven? You're muted. You are muted.
Okay, you got me down. I'm going to vote yes on this, only because I feel as though we really should have come back in the spring when the governor makes his decision how to go forward.
Thank you. Mr. Title bomb?
Yes.
Myself, yes. So that is to not recommend four zero four one zero. I will entertain a motion on the article to change the makeup and the manner of the selection to the WRA, which is a citizens' petition.
Who did not recommend?
Second.
Motion made to not recommend, and a second.
I want to disclose for the record that I don't get any compensation for anything I do with the redevelopment authority, and I've also filed a a statement of no conflict, if you will, with the town clerk on, as I do every year.
I will also make the same statement. I get no remuneration from the town for the WRA or anything else. I've also filed the disclosure with the town clerk on an annual basis. So there's a motion made and a second. Is there any further discussion? And the motion is I'm sorry, what?
No, I just make a comment that my only issue with the article is is the way the makeup of the the new makeup that they're proposing is just not comfortable with that. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, so the motion is to not recommend, and I will do a poll vote. Mr. Muniz?
No.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano? Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Mr. Title bomb?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So four one zero. I will ask for a motion on the collection of fees and penalties for the earth removal in the town of Wareham, which was also a citizens' petition.
Motion not to approve.
Okay, motion made in second. Now, this, is there any further discussion on that article?
Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry to interject at this point. I did owe Selectmen Muniz an answer.
Oh, yes, you did. I'm sorry.
On enforcement of the earth removal bylaw. There is a penalty provision in the bylaw. And later on in the general bylaws at Division ten, Article one, there is an identification of potential enforcing officers, which includes the police department and the building inspector for purposes of non-criminal disposition as opposed to filing criminal complaints in district court.
Thank you. Mr. Muniz, does that answer your question? I'm very sorry about the delay in getting it to you.
Well, you've just crossing his Ts and dotting his Is there, and I appreciate it. And as it was a, as I said, a town bylaw, not a zoning bylaw, I wanted clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So there's a motion to not recommend in a second, and we have made disclosures about the other one. Is there any further discussion? I will go for a poll vote. The recommendation is to, the motion is to not recommend Mr. Muniz.
Which article is this? We just
This is the collection of the fees and the penalties.
Uh, no.
Thank you. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano? Mr. Title bomb?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So four one zero. And now I will ask for a motion on the repurpose of the John Deacon School.
Say something first. If I don't, if I'm going to have to vote no if I can't hear from Sullivan, I'd rather wait till next week until he can give us some input from him on what he thinks of the whole idea.
I will poll the board.
I'll just vote no if that's the case.
Okay. Gentlemen, do you want to wait a week, or do you want to put it to a vote? I'm asking the selectmen.
I'll wait a week. I'm more than willing to hear what Mr. Sullivan has to say.
Mr. Slaven?
If you don't mind my interrupting, I'll certainly look through it, but if you the expectation is that I'm going to have a comprehensive analysis of this with other communities and such, I think that's I appreciate your show of show of faith in me, but I think that's a little aggressive given the timeline.
Thank you.
We go for
All right. So does that that answers your question, Mr. Tropiano, or your concern?
I'll make a motion to not recommend.
Okay, a motion to not recommend. Is there a second to that?
Yeah, I'll second.
Motion to not recommend. Is there any further discussion? I will go for a poll vote. Mr. Muniz?
No.
Mr. Slaven?
I have to vote, yeah. This one's killing me. I want the community to settle so badly, but it's it's just not set up right.
Thank you. Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Mr. Title bomb?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So it is to not recommend four one zero. Thank you. Honestly, Mr. Muniz, I don't think we voted on that quorum requirement. I know
You know what?
You you don't remember either?
For me to to debate it and
No, 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 I'm not trying to debate it.
You want to bring it on for next week so you can look at it and and make a decision, review the tape?
Double check whether we voted it or not, yeah.
You know, I I remember when we were
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to recommend.
Yeah, okay, great.
The worst we'll do is have two consistent votes, because I don't think anybody has a problem with it.
Yeah, exactly. Motion made and seconded to recommend approval of Article fifteen. I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Muniz?
Yes.
Mr. Title bomb?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So that is a five zero zero recommendation for positive action. Before we go any further, I'd like to ask that we talk about Article sixteen. I went back and I watched the tape from last week's meeting, and I listened really carefully to what my peers said about the article.
Madam Chair, I hate to interrupt, but we need to have a motion to go past the hour at ten o'clock.
Okay, motion to pass ten in a second. May I have a poll vote, please? Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Muniz?
Yes.
Mr. Title bomb?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you for noticing that, Mr. Tropiano. I've also talked with the town administrator regarding possible budget impacts of approving the article as it was written. This is the article about the charter review, charter change. Then I went back to the Charter Articles, Section two four B before the amendment, which was made in two thousand nineteen. It does not say that the Board of Selectmen have to include petitions. It uses the word, it used the words, shall receive regarding petitions.
Well, not just one correction, not petitions, but articles from
Articles, yeah.
Committees and commissions.
I'm sorry, yeah. So after reviewing all of this information, I've decided that I have to stick with the state law, which is what the article in two thousand nineteen did to it, and the most responsible course of for me is to represent all constituents of Wareham. Therefore, I would ask that you have a motion to reconsider Article sixteen so that I may record my vote as not in favor of passage.
Move reconsideration.
Is there a second? Motion to reconsider with a second poll vote. Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Mr. Title bomb?
Yes.
Mr. Muniz?
Just just reconsideration?
Yes, to open it up, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Slaven?
No.
And myself, yes. So four one zero. It is open for a motion.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So the motion would be
To not
Hearing to not recommend.
Correct. Motion made and seconded to not recommend. Is there any further discussion on that motion?
Uh, this is Section four two, right?
Section two four.
Two four. What did Section two four C say?
You want to hang on one second?
Yeah, it it says the selectmen shall.
Right, but in in section two four B, it says shall receive.
Says they shall.
Right. Okay.
All right, so
All right.
I think that's the last one I looked at was the Charter of two thousand sixteen, and had the old language, the one that was available to look at.
Okay.
That's what we haven't discussed. We keep saying two four, two, two four B, but it's two four C that it said shall.
But the petition is on two four B. Okay, I'm just going to call for a vote.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you. It to not recommend poll vote, please. Mr. Tropiano? Slaven?
No.
Mr. Muniz?
No.
Mr. Title bomb?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you, gentlemen, for allowing me to change my vote, giving me the opportunity to have rethought that. Is there any? Oh, yeah, there is. Town administrators report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just some good news for a change. We got the, with all the work being done, we got bids back on repairing the ornamental plaster wire lath. And repairing the the ceiling and repainting it for the auditorium and town hall. Came back at thirty-four thousand dollars, which is a lot of money, but which is actually less than what I thought. The good news is that's now, if we bring that to town meeting, it'd be one of the capital items bring forward. We now have another functional space in there. For example, when we're looking to for for really all our opportunities, I think it's something important for the board to discuss in the future is utilization of that room, including, we need to figure out the acoustics, obviously. That's a little rough. But you need to determine, is that where you want to have town meetings in the future? Is that where you want to hold your selectman meetings in the future? And get WCD TV to do some work in there and get it set up, because that is a fantastic space. You know, that is really, it's a, it's a good community space. We had talked about with some of the indoor farmer markets during the winter, believe it or not, or indoor markets having them in there, which is they have built in, if you will, built in what do you call them, shoppers between town and school employees and then some of the residents, so that we are so close on that room getting it done, because if you forget going back a long time ago, CPC had tried to fix the roof and ended up of the town hall, the slate roof that ended up causing more issues. We had to come in, redo it, fix it, and the slate was literally sliding off into the rubber roof and slicing through it. So after that was taken care of, we had to fix the rubber roof. Now we're to the ceiling. The next step is some of the, you know, obviously want to redo the redo the floors. It's just a sanding and restaining, I think, and but it it's a really viable and usable space, especially with the HVAC work being done that will make it so it can be heated and 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 cooled. So it's really good news. The other item I have is we have been we have a property that's been taken through tax title, so we'd like to set up an auction in December for it. And my recommendation is that we add the Everett School to the auction. I said Everett School, not Deacon. Don't come out and kill me saying Everett. So let's see what the board's interest is on that. We also, we could add the West School to that auction if you if you want us to go out, get that get that appraised, send the appraised value to Acorn with their right of first refusal. And if they don't act on it, then we can auction it off and set that appraised value as the minimum.
I'm sorry, you're talking about West, which had that reverberant clause that Mr. Bowen was trying to figure out how we Okay, thank you.
So at the very least, I'd say Deacon, let's get these off. We talked about using these, the these go to the the funds from them or the proceeds go to the sale of real estate fund. That's which you can then utilize for things such as the new police station we've been talking about. I think we need to, we need to move on that. I was in Everett this week, and I know, Mr. Muniz, you've been in there not too long ago. We're going to have some folks do clean and a couple repairs, but unless we, you know, we're, we want to put money into it, I think that that's the the best cases to auction it off.
Thank you. I just have one question. Could you speak to the the HVAC work that's being done in town hall?
Yeah, that's part of the the CARES Act. If there are the heat exchanges doing, so we'll have heat and cooling throughout the the entire building. I don't know if people realize in the basement there was air quality issues. Some rooms had to be vacated a while back. This would, this is the type of funds you could use through the CARES Act, so we're using all of that. We're we expect this to be done by December. That means that one of the most efficient, one of the greatest efficiencies we'll get is not having to put in the window AC units, which took a week week to install, a week to take out, plus the inefficiencies of those. And that being the heat and air exchange, we're pretty We're pretty good as, once the temperature drops below, I think about twenty degrees or into the teens. Then we'll need, we would need to file, fire up the boilers that we still will have active, but otherwise the efficiencies being gained are, are really good. So I know uh, I know Mr. Minnart is ecstatic over it.
Great, thank you very much. You all set on your report?
I am, thank you.
Okay, liaison reports, um, Mr. Slaven?
I'm tired, we'll do it next week.
Thank you, Mr. Muniz?
Uh, same.
Okay, Mr. Tropiano? You're muted. Mr. Titlebaum, liaison reports?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Okay, Mr. Tropiano, liaison reports?
All set.
And I'm all set as well. I didn't get the minutes from September twenty-first and the executive session minutes for October fifth, so. I don't know if you guys did.
No.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask that we just not do that, um, we put it on for next week, if that's okay with you.
There were minutes attached to the bottom of the um, material that was sent out to us for the meeting, um.
I, I didn't get it, so um.
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah, and I just, I know there was a question last week about. I think it was, I think it was the twenty-first meeting, so if you don't mind, we'll just put those off.
Good.
Um, is there any other business to come before this board? Gentlemen, I wanna thank you very much for the civil way that you behaved and I wanna thank all of the petitioners. For their presentations and their time and their energies. It's clear that we have a lot of citizens who very much care about this town and that's the best news that we can have.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Slaven and seconded by Muniz, I'm going for a roll call vote, Mr. Slaven?
Of course.
Mr. Muniz?
Yes.
Tropiano?
Yes.
Titlebaum?
Now you know.
Myself, yes, um, thank you very much, we are adjourned, thank you very much, Wareham, good night.